Um, Phil is here, Sharon is here, India. All right. Once again, I think Council Politis might be able, you know, have some issues because of work. He might be able to join us. So once again, thank you all for being with us on this brisk Saturday morning. Some of us had some difficulty jumping over kids coming down the stairs, but we're all here and that's a wonderful thing. Thank you to our facilitator this morning, Mr. Seymour for being with us one more time. Our last meeting, I believe, was very good and productive, and I'm excited to see what today is going to bring. Please remember, we're going to be here a little bit longer, but I do believe that the investment will be beneficial to us as a council indefinitely to our town. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to JL. I just want to make a note. So sometimes my internet says it's unstable. So when it says that, I will have to put myself on video or take myself off video. I think is what they say to help you stabilize your camera, whatever. So just in case you see a picture, that's why. Phil, do you have anything to say before we jump?
No, not at all. I think we should just go ahead and work through the process.
All right, JL.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Walking on again another Saturday and I first want to say, if I don't get a chance to say this, I want to let you all know that it's been a pleasure working with you all. Your passion for your town is absolutely apparent. And just, just so you understand, in any context, this people in front of me would have challenges coming to consensus just because of all of our differences that we see. If we were counselors, if we were Board of Elders at a church, if we were a board of directors in a business. And I say that, that I think that you all have really worked hard to overcome some of those built-in challenges already. It's not perfect and probably never will be, but as you listen, one of your strengths is that, one of the strengths of Blount is this, is this great council that is. I want to commend you and I want to commend you in that. I know it's frustrating sometimes. It seems like progress. But I promise you, your ability to come together like you already have done and will continue to do is to be commended. And part of my job is just to help remind you all of what binds us together as opposed to what separates us. And to get us kind of moving in the same direction. I'm like boundaries. I just want to make sure we're moving towards a goal. And with that said, I just want to kind of clearly let you know what the goal for today's session is. We're going to complete the SWOT analysis. We're going to look at some, if there's some natural strategic connections amongst the SWOT analysis in and of itself, and we'll discuss that a little bit further. And then really want to identify at least some, some strong strategic priorities for this council. And I want to end by making some recommendations moving forward. I think that in this time session, I think that's going to be a good thing to walk away with to say, these are the three areas that we want to focus some energy and attention on. I'm in the process of learning a lot about municipality and how you conduct business in the background. And I will be asking questions along the way just to help me understand process. So that is our goal for today. We're going to take some breaks as well. I hope you all got a chance to at least think about opportunities and threats that'll help us to make this first part of this process move a little bit quicker. And then we can get into the business of really looking and doing some analysis, some real-time analysis about what should be some areas that we should think about and focus on. I want to say this, say this again, like I did last week. I think that in terms of the council and having some planning and some thinking is, I think we really need to set some, some landmarks and some stakes in developing a mission and a vision for this organization. And I know I keep kind of saying it over and over again, but about strategic planning, that is so core and fundamental to any type of strategic planning because everything should be made on that foundation. Without that, this is kind of hard because everyone has their thoughts. We don't have that, that general kind of place where we can put any idea next to and say, it does if, is it aligned with our vision? Is it aligned with our mission and our values? And that's a good way to kind of vet projects. So I keep stressing that. I just hope that you all can come up with a formal way to do that or maybe documenting and such. So that, you know, if there is a next year and I'm in this place again, we're not having that same conversation again. Or at least putting something in place so that we can, that we're planning for that. I think that's going to be crucial for you all, and I think it'll be also a good way to involve the town and to really bolster your identity. As a, so with that said, I'm going to go ahead and jump right in. I'm going to start sharing my screen here. And if you all can give me a thumbs up to let me know that you all can see my, my screen there is kind of colorful. All right. So quick recap, I'm going to do this very quickly. We identified strengths and weaknesses. These are internal things that we tend to have control over, things we do well, things we don't do so well. And let me change the gallery view so I can see everybody all at the same time. All right. So I've already started some processing of grouping some things together, and we're going to get back to that in our second part of our conversation. But I do want to kind of move forward into our opportunities. Unless there is a question about strengths or weaknesses that we need to address or a point of clarity for anybody in the meeting. Maybe after looking at the list, you had a question or a thought. Is that for anybody at all? Okay, great. We're going to move on forward to opportunities. So now opportunities are different from strengths and weaknesses in the sense that these are external things. And I have to keep stressing that because this is where a lot of SWOT analysis tend to kind of break down. Is they're, they're identifying strengths as opportunities or opportunities which are really strengths. Opportunities are things that are external and that is the key term in this whole kind of discussion. These are things that are outside of our, our locus of control, if you will. What we do is we hope to either take advantage of them or influence them, but we don't have direct control over them. So questions to consider, what upcoming changes, environmental, legislative, political, regulatory, fiscal that may have an impact on our organization and what trends have potential to positively impact the organization. I'll give you an example of what a opportunity could be. So let's say that there's a large Fortune 100 company, let's say, who makes a decision that they want to set up a second headquarters in a, in a mid-size or small to mid-size town in the northeast. That could be considered as an opportunity. It's something that we don't have control over, but it could be something that could potentially have a positive impact on us. You know, maybe there is a major university system that wants to expand its canvas in this particular campus in this part of the state. And they're looking at different towns and regions to do that in. That could be an opportunity. There may be some opportunities that have presented themselves or will present themselves with this new federal administration that we need to keep an eye on. It could be some opportunities that we can take advantage, whether it's increased funding or grants available, various credits that we can apply for, things of that nature. These are opportunities that are external. So we've all had a chance to kind of think about this and I'm going to open the floor to you all to share some opportunities. I'm going to document them as well. I will say also in terms of a deliverable that I'm going to deliver to you all is I'm going to take this and create a SWOT, a SWOT analysis document, which will have some narrative in addition to what we've come up with so that there is a document that can kind of live in, in your coffers, but you'll be able to refer back to it in the later months and years as you're looking at making some of these things happen. So I want to open up the floor and, you know, we'll see your raised hands if somebody wants to share some opportunities and we'll start documenting. So we have Counselor Curtin first and you can start.
JL, is it possible that we, because when you're sharing your screen, we can't all see each other?
Okay.
That you want to type, right?
Yeah, I'm going to type. I can, I don't have to. I can see in both of mine. I don't know if you can put your gallery view on with the sharing the screen or does it? I have the option. I don't know if you don't have, you don't have that option on your, your end.
I, I think it's mine says side-by-side gallery view. So I like your screen is center, but I, I can toggle up and down, I guess. So go ahead.
What I'll do is I'll stop the sharing. I can just record. And then I can just make my adjustment on my end. So Counselor Curtin and then we have Merritt and I think we also have Deputy Moore. And Deputy Mayor, I think had his hand up too. Yes, I see. We'll go in that order.
All right. Thank you, JL. I think one of the, the opportunities that I, I'll wait till Council Politis come on. He's, I noticed that he's trying.
Coming in.
Just one second. Okay.
So while he's going to wait for Council Politis, can I just jump in? We do have some grant opportunities coming up. One of them that we're seeking is for composting as a town and being able to find grant funds to help us to be able to develop a program. I think that's an opportunity. There's a couple of grants coming down from the federal government, helping us with, with COVID-19 and things like that. So I think those are opportunities as well.
All right. Thank you. The one I want to start off with is the opportunity that we have coming out of COVID. I think that's the clear one, and I think Bloomfield is in a unique position in regards to economic development. Because we've been lagging behind per se compared to a lot of our counterparts around the Hartford County when it comes to economic development. And I think that's a major opportunity for us because the market is, is going to be the ideal market to invest in, in potential projects per se that will benefit the community from a tax base. Also, the private sector is going to look to infuse, you know, some of that money that they would receive from federal government, whatever the case may be, into a local economy like us that's prime for investment. So I believe those are major opportunities. The, the last one that I want to mention in regards to our education, I think it's a, it's a major opportunity for us to look at how we use the resources going forward. I was thinking about, you know, before we were talking about, you know, you invested money into the school system. It's all in a classroom. It's focused, driven on that. I think, in my opinion, we have to look at how we educate our students. We can clearly see through this opportunity here with COVID distance learning. How could we incorporate that into the curriculum going forward, I believe will be important? And I think it will be a cost saving at the same time, but that's something, that's an opportunity to collaborate with the school system to be able to benefit both sides.
All righty. Thank you, Counselor Merritt.
Yeah, I'm more or less along the same lines. I think there's going to be a lot of opportunities to get money from Washington with the new administration. We have, we have, for one thing, the East Coast Greenway, which passes right through the center of Bloomfield. We have some, oh, seven or eight miles of it in town here, which we've just started and we fortunately have a section in. Because my great concern has been they'll find another pathway for us if we don't keep going. The state chewed us out a few years ago for not making enough progress. Or at least we've gotten some now, but there's going to be an awful lot of federal money available for green projects. And that's a very green project that benefits the whole country, the whole state. Because it's just, East Coast Greenway goes from Florida to Maine and we're right on it. And I think that's a wonderful thing and I, I think it's very popular with the town. And I think it's important that we get plans ready so that when that chance to apply for these projects comes up, we'll be able to do it. In fact, there's stuff out there now we should be applying for. Because we just have been sitting on our hands for a few years on that. And also something even like the library, wouldn't it be nice to get the federal money to pay for that or part of it at least? I think that's something, if we have plans ready, there's going to be infrastructure money available. So we want to be in a position to take advantage of those. So that I think our planning, I guess I've been broken record on this, should be along those lines of getting ready to be in a position to, to accept that money. Thank you.
Before I continue on, I just want to ask a question. This is a general question. Are these observations that you all are making, is it based on, or is it based on your thoughts about what you think the new administration is going to be focusing on, or is it based on maybe trends? What are, what are we basing these observations on?
Well, I'm basing it on stuff I've read about the plans to have an infrastructure project. And I, I, and there already is money available coming for rails to trails if we apply for it and are ready for it. So I mean, this is not news. And what I remember, and I always hate to remember, is back about 10 years ago in the last recession. And believe it or not, we're in another recession now. Our economy's been propped up, but we are in a recession. And so that you're going to see government action. And, and 10 years ago or 15 years ago, well, it was about 10 years ago. I remember that we didn't, there was half a million dollars that they, that we were supposed to get from the feds. And, and we didn't go and pick it up. I mean, that to me was the most, it was a, you know, we, you had to adjust a little bit. Somebody else got that money in, in the state because we didn't care enough to go after it. And that really disgusted me. I, but anyway, so I, I hope we are ready.
Yeah, that wasn't, I just wanted to make sure that especially in this stuff that we're, that we're identifying bona fide opportunities, at least as best of our, you know, sometimes it could be just a thought, you know, we might make some assumptions, which I think are, are rooted and grounded in data, which could say that, you know, with a democratic administration, we know these are some of his priorities. These are some of the things he's highlighted in his campaign. So we can, excuse me, identify opportunities based on that. As long as we're not just kind of, you know, making a wish, kind of saying, you know, there's something out there. So that's why I asked that question. I wasn't geared towards you. It's probably for everyone, but thank you for that clarity. Deputy Mayor Man, I believe you're next, and then we'll go, just in my screen, Counselor Goff to Counsel Calhoun.
Good morning, everyone. I'm thinking in terms of Bloomfield being a poster child for diversity in Connecticut and in the country. I think the mayor says it all the time, how amazing this town is. I think the timing is appropriate for a community like ours to stand up and be the best we can as an example to other parts of the country. I think the comments that were made already indicate that the federal administration may be prepared to reward this kind of community sentiment and community activity. I think we need to, I think we have all, all the elements. I just think we have to improve on it and, and make ourselves known to the rest of the world. And part of that, I mean, we're talking about the, the, the opportunities, the economic opportunities. The town has been proactive in establishing three tax increment financing districts, which are ahead of the economy's reawakening in the hopes that we can resolve some of the economic development and physical development problems within our community, particularly in areas that are in need. And I think that will make us open and available for what's prepared to come down the line, opportunities. We just have to broadcast it. People have to know we're here. So that's a, you know, in a post-COVID world, I think we are going, we could be in a very positive position. So I think also the other element is, is this coming year, we begin to look at a revision of our plan of community development. So all of these things can come together. If we get our heads together, we can, we can actually put together a plan of development that, that begins to enunciate and, and all the things that I just said in terms of making our community the best it could be.
Thank you, Counselor Goff.
Yes, thank you. Just, I'll, I'll say one thing on that and then two points I want to make. But one thing that the Deputy Mayor made, the comment about plan of conservation development. And again, I was stressed last time. I mentioned that as a weakness because we don't have a tendency to follow that, those documents. But I do agree that if we focus on putting that together and going back to your original statement about having a mission statement, you know, that can all tie together, the mission statement tied together with a plan of conservation development. I, I do agree with you that a mission statement and a vision statement that really, you know, leads the town is, is, is something that we need. I'll just make two points. One is sort of a more general point to what Counselor Mayor said about the Greenway. I think that's a, I, you know, I'm a big proponent, but I think that it's a little more general. I think it has to do with connectivity. We need to connect a lot more to resources around us so that we can use them. So for example, one of the things you said earlier about, you know, a university, it has always been very surprising to me how unconnected we are from the University of Hartford. And it's right down the road and we have, we have people who, you know, we have students who live in apartments and, you know, real housing in town. But we've never had a strong connection with the University of Hartford. I think that kind of connectivity and whether, you know, the Greenway is one way of doing it. You know, we need to think about other ways. I would, you know, I would think, you know, in terms of investment, especially in the, you know, investment in some of the TIF areas, you know, thinking big. I would like to think about reinstituting the streetcar between Hartford and Bloomfield along the classic streetcar route. You know, it would be interesting to see how that plays out after COVID in terms of public transportation. Because that's, you know, that's something I think COVID has negatively impacted. The other thing I'll say is just in, in response to a couple of people have mentioned the world post-COVID. And I think that's true. I think there's a big opportunity. But I don't think it's just an opportunity to get money. I think it's an opportunity to rethink how we live and how we put our structures together. This has clearly been a wake-up call in terms of the structures we have, you know, not working. You know, we have spent a lot of, the, the town through its economic development advisors have spent a lot of strategic energy in attracting, quote, the entertainment industry, food and food and beverage and entertainment. That hasn't worked out very well in COVID. So I think it's important that we, I do think it's extremely important that we, that an opportunity, COVID is an opportunity, but it's more than an opportunity to just get money. It's really an opportunity to rethink how we form a sustainable economy. How we, you know, the kinds of things that would not be as, would be more resilient to pandemics or other kinds of shocks to the system. So I, I like that idea, but I also, you know, I also want to temper it a little in terms of, it's not just a matter of getting more money and it's not just a matter of taking advantage of that. There are grants out there clearly, grants and, and potential federal funds, potential state funds. All those things, you know, are opportunities. They're also risks because I think, I don't think there's no, I don't, I don't think there's any assurance that those are going to come to us and we shouldn't plan on this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Calhoun and then Counselor DeLorenzo.
A lot of what's been said that was on my list. But again, we are in a prime position because of our bond rating. So if we do have to take on low-interest loans, hopefully that, you know, there'll be subsidies that will come our way. And yes, most of what we've been talking about this morning are our wish lists, our goals wish lists. But again, even if we have to take on low interest, as low as possible interest loans to complete a lot of the projects that we, we've talked about or the goals in which we are going to be setting from today going forward. So that's my little wrap for now. Thank you.
I did with that, for everyone, I added bond rating to our strengths because I think that it wasn't listed there explicitly. I think it should be and, and in terms of opportunity will be to leverage that in, 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 in securing funding that we may need as a possible opportunity. So I just wanted to, for me, I add that to the strengths. I think that should have been there. All right, Counselor DeLorenzo.
Yes, thank you, JL. Again, as Counselor Calhoun mentioned, a lot of what was on my list has already been brought up. And I, that was my one, the bond rating. I mean, I, it's an opportunity. But it's, you know, how we use that, how we promote ourselves in order to make us look good to investors to come in to Bloomfield and, you know, based on that rating, help with our economic development. The other thing I wanted to mention is, I think Deputy Mayor talked about the TIF, which is on my list. But also, we talked about having public-private partnerships. So that was another opportunity I felt that we could look into more. And then again, I think we talked about this as well, but I think the potential for the new library is also a very good opportunity because that's going to help us revitalize the entire town center. So if we could, you know, go through with getting the new library and getting that bonding and using any money that we get from the feds, as Counselor Merritt said, you know, I think that would all be great things for the town. And it would help us focus in on the, the center. So I think with that, that covered, you know, everyone, I think we're, a lot of us are all, all on the same page with a lot of these opportunities. So I think it was very good. So thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Curtin.
Yeah, I just want to highlight something that Counselor Goff said because I'm a strong believer of this. And I believe that when you compare various local, let's use Connecticut as an example, the 169 small towns and city, what will separate us from our counterparts is how we focus on self-sufficiency. I say that to say this, we can't just rely anymore on something that's not there. We talk about grants and we talk about funding from the federal government. We talk about from Connecticut. That's, that's, that's in the past. And I think more and more local economy has to come in with a mindset. I know there's always this struggle and this balance when you talk about the, the purpose of government. But I think you have to start blending that with the business aspect of thinking how a business runs. You don't want it to run like a business per se, but you have to incorporate some of that mindset. Where how do we create an economy that's self-sufficient in the sense of, you know, we create the environment. I believe government role is to create an environment, not to look for, I say handouts, but that's what it is. You're looking for help, but that help is not there. So I think what's going to really separate us from our counterparts is how do we create an environment where we're self-sufficient? And that's a key component, I think, moving forward. And if we could work on that and, and really put some effort into it, I believe that separates us.
All right. Thank you. I see Counselor Mayor and is, are there any more comments for this section so we can stay on track in time?
Yes, this, this is on this section. I, I just want to follow up on, on two things. One is, I think a strength is, is our success with economic development. I, I know we've had a dry couple of years, but that's the way economic development works. So somehow it comes in bunches and there was a bunch just before many of you folks came on the council. But I don't think it's this council's fault that, that I, I should make a big deal out of that, but it's not true. I think its talent has done very well with economic development. In fact, most of our taxes are paid by non-residential, which is a real strength. So we can, I mean, if you raise taxes, most of that money is going to come from non-residential sources. And those are, I think frankly, they can afford to do it. So it's, that gives, puts us in a very good position for dealing with the future. Just as you say, Counselor Curtin is saying, we, self-sufficiency, we are self-sufficient and we're in very good shape because of that. And I would also like to comment on Counselor Goff's comments about the University of Hartford. It's just something we need so badly to connect. I, I think we ought to have a road going to it. And I think they ought to have the bike path going to it. And I think we ought to have a joint economic development project going there, which I hope with this new program we can do. But they don't, they don't land all the way into Bloomfield and, and to not take advantage of that, I think it's a shame. And I think we really should try to find some way to work with the University of Hartford or just in spite of them. Just to connect to them with a, with a road and with a bike path and with some development. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments and.
Can I, can I ask a clarifying question? Which I don't know. Maybe Phil can help me. When we're talking about taxes, I, I hear it all the time that our, our largest block of taxpayers are businesses.
Phil? That's, that's correct. About only 44% of our tax revenue comes from residential properties. We're very, very fortunate in that in a comparative basis with other, other communities. When I was in Avon, it was close to 70%, 72% came from residential taxpayers. Different town, different demographic. Different town, different demographics, all that. But you'll find most communities, if you do research, uh, that most of them are between 60 and 80% on residential taxes. We're only 44%. I think our biggest competitor, closest competitor in those statistics is Windsor. And a lot of that is due to the day hill development, which we've benefited from too. Not as much because we don't have as much of the desirable property for development that, that Windsor does. I'd like to add two things, JL. One is, uh, taking this retreat and the outcome of this retreat and, and using it, uh, when the council gets ready to hire a new town manager in several months. That's an opportunity, maybe short-term, but it's an opportunity. And then a longer mid-range, uh, opportunity is, uh, to, to leverage the, uh, uh, nicest community in Connecticut moniker that Reader's Digest gave to us in terms of, uh, of making the community, uh, desirable. We use the, uh, uh, National Municipal League, uh, you know, uh, award that we got, uh, back in, I think it was 1970, America's all, you know, best communities. And, uh, that's, you know, so long ago that it's become, uh, you know, of marginal use, but still of use. But I think the nicest community in Connecticut, even though Reader's Digest may, may not really be a strong, uh, community or, uh, organization or, or on everybody's lips like it used to be 30 years ago or 40 years ago. It certainly is a designation that, uh, we could leverage on our, uh, economic development efforts. Thank you.
Absolutely. Um, before I shift in, um, I, Counselor Goff, I think you had your hand up. Did you have a comment you wanted to make? I just want to make sure.
No, actually I, I, I had the same question the mayor had actually in terms of sort of getting more clarification about, um, what the split between the taxes were. And I mean, 44% is, uh, less than half. It's not, studying less than half, although, uh, man, you know, Andrew Shink's comment about what the sort of average in Connecticut is, uh, makes it clear that we have more. I, I would however, uh, while I think that's, you know, it's, it can be a good thing if, um, the tax, that the taxes are paid by someone else. I think that, I think that comes, that is a devil's bargain. And it comes with, you know, it comes with taking some of the things that those bring to your community. I would disagree with Counselor Merritt in terms of the econo, the quote, economic development uh, over the past decade and a half. I think it's not been good economic development. I don't think it's sustainable. I think it's brought a lot of environmental and, uh, quality of life problems to the town. And I think it says a lot that a company like, uh, Trader Joe's is willing to put a distribution center in Bloomfield but not a store. And I think that's a major problem that we have to deal with. And it sort of goes back to what Counselor Curtin said. I think that, you know, we need to deal, we, we need to, to look at metrics and analysis objectively and, um, with reality. And we need to understand that, you know, we, we have, we have to start looking at where our money goes and, and, and what's being done with it and make sure there is a return on investment. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Thank you all for your comments. I think that was very good. Um, I'm like many of you, I'm very encouraged because once again, in this one, probably more so than any of the other sections so far, there are definitely clear themes. We're all thinking generally in the same direction in a lot of areas. We might have some disputes about, uh, uh, how we analyze our current standings. But it seemed like there's a real strong general consensus on some things that we should at least pursue. So that is very encouraging for me and I think it should be for you as well. Um, that we have plenty of opportunities here to think about it. We can kind of go, go about with strong bipartisan, uh, support. That's just all about Bloomfield first, um, kind of thinking. Um, so that's, that's really exciting for me. So, um, let's move quickly so we can get ready, uh, staying on track. And I think we're doing a really good job. Um, I thank you all for coming prepared with your lists and things that really helped to move this along. And that helps me to know for further sessions that I do, that's a good best practice to deploy. Um, I just want to, I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot, but, um, uh, India or Counselor Wong or Counselor, uh, Politis, did you have anything she wanted to add to the opportunity section? I know there's a lot of common consensus, but I didn't want to overlook anybody.
Um, this is India. So I just wanted to add briefly, um, don't forget the opportunity that we have moving forward to enhance our community engagement and equitable participation to create change. Because the people that we're serving, they should have a voice at the table on how the things that we're making decisions about affect their lives in general. So that's just my comment.
Uh, good morning. This is Danielle. Um, I've been having crazy connectivity issues, so I apologize, but I did weigh in. Um, or excuse me, I did hear a lot of what my counselors, there's some gaps in what I've heard. But for the most part, I think, um, most of the counselors has covered some of my main, my main points. Um, and I'll just fill in the blank. So again, apologies for that.
No problem. Thank you. Thank you. All right. So now let's move on to.
JL, hold a quick second. Um, Sharon, I don't know if Sharon should.
Oh, you know what? I'm so sorry because I can only see a, uh, a shadow, a shadow.
I think, I think she's trying to be deliberate with that, but we see you Sharon, we see.
Witness protection group.
Everything is, I apologize for, for mayor.
Well, I listened to everything that, um, all the counselors said, which were, but, and I also, um, I believe someone mentioned it, um, last week on another one of the, um, the slides, but wouldn't the, uh, town center development be a big opportunity for Bloomfield? Yes.
Yeah, we will put it down. Absolutely.
Definitely. That was one of the things that I thought should be transferred over.
I would, I'm sorry, if I can just add, um, the partnerships that are being developed between the towns, right? So West Hartford and Bloomfield is having a very strong partnerships. There's some things that we're working on together. Um, also looping in, uh, Windsor. So I think the partnerships that we have with other towns is going to be very important, um, coming up. And I think those are going to be great opportunities.
Just one more thing, this is Indy again. Um, to have the opportunity to develop a 501(c)(3) entity so that we can go after and seek those grant opportunities to assist with town initiatives.
Very good, very good. So we're going to transition onto threats. Uh, so threats are similar to opportunities in the sense that these are external, um, uh, forces or stimulus that can have an impact, a negative impact on us, um, that we need to kind of keep our eye on, that we need to try to mitigate as much as possible. We need to put planning in place to, um, uh, kind of, uh, to preemptive, preemptive, preemptively, excuse me, deal with them if they were to really present themselves to us. Um, or to have just some plans in place. If we know we're going to have to deal with it, there's no way of avoiding it. Well, what can we do, um, to plan it? So let's, uh, open up the floor to that. Any threats that we, that folks have identified for town of Bloomfield? Uh, so I see Counselor Curtain first and we'll move from there.
Yeah, uh, the one that I've been thinking about, and it's a real one, is that, uh, when you flip on the, the private sector, uh, more and more organizations are looking how to now create a space where folks are not actually going into the office and they're, they're working, uh, from home. So what that does, that creates from a real estate standpoint, and I know that we were just talking about what percentage, and we said 40 something odd percent is, um, you know, we're talking to companies within our town. If those companies start moving or downside in our, that creates a major, uh, threat to the town of Bloomfield. So that's the flip side. Uh, and I think, I'll say this, I think one of the threat could be us. You know, as a council, uh, because we could overthink things and, um, we can make some bad decisions. So I think it's critical to work with staff, um, work with a town manager to make sure that we put some intentional, um, things in place that will help us through, um, not only COVID, but I'm talking about the next five years. Come up with a plan, uh, an economic plan, uh, a sustainable one. Because if we don't, that's a major threat, uh, especially to our, uh, tax, uh, revenue. So I'll just leave it there and I'll wait for my colleagues and then I'll probably mention some other stuff. Thank you.
I will say, we're going to go after this Counselor Goff and Deputy, uh, Mayor Mann. Um, I will say this, I just did a webinar this week on, uh, trends in workforce development in 2021. And one of the trends that I, that I shared in that webinar is that remote work is here to stay. Many, many CEOs, many employers have learned through this storm that they can, number one, maintain their level of service without the investment of, of real brick and mortar dollars. Um, and in a lot of ways, some industries even learned that they can be more nimble, more quick, more agile, even meeting the needs of their customers in, in these types of remote settings. I, I don't anticipate with vaccination, with herd immunity, all of that, I think that remote working is, is going to be here to stay. So I think that's a very real threat that you need to think about. As I, I anticipate, there's going to be many industries that are going to start downsizing their investment in those brick and mortar real dollars. And you're going to see those investment dollars going other places, but I think that's a very real threat. So I just wanted to add my commentary on to that. Uh, Counselor Goff, then Deputy Mayor Mann, and then we have Counselor DiLorenzo.
Yes, and, and thank you. And, and I, I certainly agree with your, your thoughts on that. We'll see how the trends arise. Uh, I, I also agree with Counselor Curtin about the not longer-term, five-year planning. I know there was a lot of discussion about that last year. I think that's more of a weakness than a threat because it's just something that we've never been able to, we, and I don't mean we, this council, I mean the town as a whole and council's past and present. It's just something we haven't been able to integrate into our thinking. And I think obviously long-term, long-term planning is essential to get things done and, and do them efficiently. I'll bring up two, uh, two things here. Uh, one, I think that has to go on this list is our utilities. Um, we, you know, we have very little control over what they do and they have an extraordinary impact on quality of life in town and, and finances and everything else. Obviously the in DC, we all know what their issues, problems, continuing, continuing tribulations are. Uh, we saw last summer with Eversource, uh, and we continue to see with Eversource, which is our electric provider. Um, there are major problems there and, um, major controversies and debates. We have our, our trash pickup, the, the Mira. Um, that, that, you know, that is a major, major issue that is being trying to be addressed at the state level and how all this plays out and how it plays out both into quality of life, finances, I think is something that really is a threat. It's not something we can do a lot about. We can make some recommendations and, you know, in some cases we potentially could get off of some of these, uh, needs utilities, but, um, uh, it's, it's a major thing. The other thing I'd like to mention, and I'll send this out later, because I was thinking about this. Um, I actually went back to the plan of conservation development of, because it has a lot of demographic issue, demographic information. And it has the median household income of Bloomfield compared to, uh, compared to the state and compared to Hartford County for every 10 years from 1979 through 2009. And then if you go out to the web, you can get the 2019 numbers. And the startling, this, the position of Bloomfield with respect to that has changed very dramatically in those, um, 40 years. Um, we, we used to be, when we started this, the median household income in Bloomfield was 20% above the state average. Now we're 12% below. And the, you know, I think this ties into the presentation we had at the last council meeting, which showed that approximately 40% of Bloomfield residents are either, uh, at, you know, Alice's, uh, households, meaning they are, uh, you know, above the poverty line, but are still not, uh, not generated enough to make, uh, you know, to, to put away money and, and, and have a comfortable lifestyle and poverty line. So I think, you know, this, this is a, this is a threat uh, from the point of view of what are we seeing? How does that, you know, how, how do, what, what needs to be done about that? It, you know, probably partially a statewide thing. I think we've seen concentrations of wealth in, in smaller and smaller niches of Connecticut as part of what, you know, one writer called the big sort. Um, but we need to, you know, we need to be aware of that. And that's a fundamental change in sort of, uh, you know, the relative, I guess, um, you know, ability to pay of the community. So I think that's a major threat. I will send, I will send this, these, these numbers out to people later.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, Deputy Mayor Mann?
Okay, thank you. Um, obviously a threat is, uh, town's inability to control rising demands for services and, uh, uh, meeting the needs uh, uh, that, that are broadcast, making the difficult decisions as to priorities. It's always a problem and it's becoming more problem as the, uh, the, the rev, revenue expense situation keeps, keeps changing. Um, I think, uh, we don't know what the economic, uh, impact of ongoing after COVID is going to be, but we're all hopeful that it's going to resume some sort of, uh, uh, growth phase because of the pent-up demand that has existed. So even though it's a, uh, an opportunity, uh, we don't know how long the current, this COVID business is going to last. It seems to be, uh, that, so that could be a, a potential threat. I think what we were talking about earlier about, uh, making our town visible as, uh, as an opportunity. We need, uh, the, the problem, the threat here is our inability to get the word out. We have a woeful public publicity, uh, communication problem. And I think that's, that's something we need to think about. That's a threat. We may not be able to get the job done if we don't get the word out. Um, a couple of other things, um, to managing revenues. The, uh, Councilman Goff mentioned the declining, uh, median income. I think we have to be aware of that because, uh, we, it's, it, it is a challenge. It is a challenge and it also gives us a focus of how, how we can generate more revenue, but also the numbers of people we have to pay more attention to and provide services for. And it, uh, the threat is that those numbers of people and the amount of, uh, attention is going to increase over time. And again, getting back to the first comment about, you know, expenses. Uh, I think, uh, in our inability to control these rising costs be in, in a, in a, in a period in which there is limited assistance from state and federal governments. I think we all, some of us remember what state and federal governments used to do in providing tremendous amounts of financial in, input to community budgets. That's not here, not there anymore. The threat now is we have to operate pretty much on our own. We have to be more mindful of, uh, what we spend our money on and how, and, and, and the priorities that we create. And I can't help but feel that a threat of the union contracts that we have to deal with. The unions have been more of a, more of a functionary in what we have to do than they should be. And, uh, how we deal with that, it's not just the local situation. And obviously there's state, there's state regulations here. And I think, uh, dealing, making them part of the, part of the team rather than their own team would be a big help. So those are some of them. I'll, I maybe I'll come back later with some of our thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor DiLorenzo.
Yes, thanks, JL. A great list so far. Again, a lot of things have, are already covered. One thing though, I would say is it seems like a lot of our opportunities are also ending up being threats to us. So it, it seems like it falls on both sides and I think that's something we have to be careful of and monitor that closely. But for example, I mean, COVID, you know, we don't really know. Yes, we're getting vaccines, but you know, the rollout is slow. Um, we don't really know what the full ramifications are going to be with the whole COVID-19, plus now we have the threat of all these variants that are coming in. So yes, things are looking better now in the state of Connecticut, but we don't really know yet, uh, what the future will hold. I don't know if somebody already mentioned it, but the Board of Ed Budget, I don't know, maybe Counselor Goff, you mentioned that. Um, you know, we really haven't interacted, uh, for good or for bad. Uh, the board has not been very communicative with us about what their budget needs are. And so I, I think I view that as a bit of a threat. We don't really know what they're going to need, uh, going forward. Then there's also the potential for a tax increase. We're entering our budget season now. Uh, March is going to be very busy with all of our budget meetings. And we're not sure where things are going to fall out, but the threat of a, of a tax increase could, could be hurtful for the community. Another thing that I feel is a big threat are incomplete projects. And again, if we can't find ways to complete some of these projects, the fact that we have so many of them that are remaining incomplete or not being able to be finished is, I think, is a threat. Again, I won't go on this one, but just to reiterate the town center, you know, vacancies. I'm, I'm concerned about. I'm, I'm concerned about vacancies, especially in the Winton Berry Mall. And just around the general town center, you know, what that's going to do to us. Uh, we already talked about MDC, we talked about, I don't know if we've talked about OPEB, but that's another, a potential threat. Our debt service, we've talked about unions. Uh, lastly is a threat I had was new streams of revenue. You know, if we can't, we talked as an opportunity that we have economic development success. And we talked about, you know, how we are, you know, 44% of our taxes are paid by non-residential. But we need to look for new streams of, of revenue. And I think Counselor Curtin, uh, spoke to that earlier with, uh, uh, some of what he said that we have, you know, self-sufficiency and not relying on everything coming from, you know, the federal government or the state government. So I think those things, uh, you know, are some of the threats. And I think I'll, I'll leave it at that for now with, uh, possibility of, of adding on later. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Consular Curtin, I believe MDC had your hand up. Yes.
Thank you. I think, uh, as we go through this, the one major threat I believe that we'll all face, but we don't want to see that is the threat to our diversity in the town of Bloomfield. And usually an unstable economy creates that, um, that, that gap that most municipalities see within, uh, this state when it comes to diversity. So I believe that we have to make sure that we create an environment where we move towards, um, uh, affordable housing within the town. I think that's a, a crucial, uh, part of moving forward. Because, I mean, back in the seventies or, I mean, I mean, I read documents where folks migrated from Hartford, here to Bloomfield for a better life, you know, to live, uh, in, in a place outside of Hartford. And I think Bloomfield has been that, uh, that central hub, uh, in, in, in the Hartford County and Connecticut across the board. And I think we all, uh, uh, love that. I think we all were driven to this community because of the diversity. And I think it's imperative for us to maintain that. And in maintaining that, I think we have to make sure we create the environment to sustain that, uh, that, that diversity as we move forward. So I see that as a major threat to our diversity.
Okay, thank you. Um, Deputy Mayor Mann, I'm going to hold off on you for one moment. No, no, actually no, you're next, and then Counselor Calhoun. And then we'll see if anybody else has a comment.
Yeah, I just want to pick up on something that Counselor Curtin just mentioned. I think, uh, maintaining diversity is extremely important, but I think we all have to accept the fact that maintaining diversity, uh, goes in two different directions. Uh, in order to support the, 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 the lower income diverse population, we need to have, uh, uh, some other people with other incomes. So it means you have to appeal to different, different people, different, different economic groups. And have, and diversity clearly means that you're bringing in, you're, you're trying to maintain that. Because we know from experience, history, history will show us that, uh, if you go in too much in one way, you, you, you know, there, it will, it will continue to go that, uh, uh, that way. There'll be the tipping point, in which case you may not be able to recover from. So we have, we're right now at a very advantageous position and we should at least try to maintain that. So I think there's a maintenance while you're dealing with the needs of the population. You also have to be dealing with the needs of the community's future economic situation. So I, I think, and I don't, I'm not casting aspersions on anything. I'm just saying we have to be aware of what we're dealing with. Other, a couple of other things is, uh, uh, no one has mentioned yet the climate change. You know, obviously that's a bigger thing than we can handle, but there are a lot of little things that we can do in order to sustain ourselves and become again, uh, 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 strong in, in, in our position with regard to the environment. I think Bloomfield is extremely well ahead of the curve when it comes to, uh, uh, certain environmental activities like our, uh, home audit situations and our solar adapt, adapters. Uh, people have put solar, uh, panels in their, in their homes. We, we, last I looked, we've had about almost 50% of our pop, of our households have participated in the home audits, which placed us well above many, many of the towns in the state of Connecticut. So we're on that track and I think we need to continue looking at that and find out different ways that we can improve sustainability. Uh, perhaps without giving up tremendous acreages of land to, to solar, solar energy fields. We could utilize our existing rooftops and our commercial establishments to do that. And we can promote that kind of activity. The mayor's also mentioned already the composting potential, uh, as a way of reducing the amount of, uh, uh, stuff that goes into our waste stream, as well as producing something of value that has an ability to generate, uh, uh, agricultural growth and, and, and food development, for, for food, food, uh, security. Um, but the other thing is, uh, the inability of our, you know, potential inability of this council to talk to one another, deliberate and make the right decisions is clearly, uh, you know, decisions that everybody can agree on and make the tough choices of priorities. Well, we've got to do this, but yeah, let's try and do that, but we can't afford to do this. So is there another way we can do that? Those are the kinds of decisions that if we really can't talk about, and if we can't really work hard, those are the things that, that to me is a big threat.
What I want to be moving forward is I have some folks that we haven't heard. I'm, we're hearing them first. I see, uh, Phil, and then we'll move on to the folks who are making their second or third comments. Um, so let's go with, uh, Counselor Calhoun, and then we'll go with, uh, Mayor and Counselor Wong and Phil. And then we'll move to Council Mary and Di Lorenzo. So start with Counselor Calhoun first.
Okay, thank you. So a part of diversity is, is our age diversity as well. Not just, um, you know, our colorisms or, you know, black, white, brown. So, and, and this is something that may be out of our control, but, um, statewide due to our tax base, um, it may tax out a lot of seniors from wanting to live comfortably in Connecticut. So I'm not sure what we can do as a town, um, to offset some of those taxes. Um, but that, that's a key barrier for, for not just Bloomfield, but, but the state, period. But we have to look internally, um, initially to see possibly what we can do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so great conversation. Um, I do want to circle back though on the diversity piece, right? Um, Counselor Goff brought up the Alice population of which Bloomfield has, um, quite a few. Um, I think it's important, um, and Council, uh, Deputy Mayor talked about us being able to coalesce around, uh, certain priorities and talk and make good decisions. When we have people in our community that can barely buy food, barely pay rent, those who are paying, uh, taxes, barely pay taxes, we do have to look at what we do, um, and, and how we spend taxpayers' money. You're, you're correct. And when we weigh out the projects that we're, that we're going to fund, how does taking money, let's say, uh, from, um, providing, uh, proper streets or providing money to go to social services that's going to help with the Alice population? And let's say beautify the greenway. I think when we, we look at being leaders, we have to look at all our residents and what's going to benefit all our residents. And if we're leaving a section of, uh, our population out, then we are doing them a disservice. So while we're talking about spending money, while we're talking about threats, those are some of the threats. When we can't see our entire, um, residents, when we can't see the totality of our residents and how, uh, diverting money to different projects will affect certain of our populations. That is definitely a threat. We can't always just look out of our windows and make a, uh, uh, an assumption or say that feeding this, um, project and not this project is going to be better for us. So I do believe that we have to be mindful of all our populations. We have to be mindful of our diverse populations and making sure that everyone feel a part of Bloomfield because everyone pay taxes, everyone lives here. And we have to make those hard decisions. Um, are we going to feed the greenway? Or are we going to make sure that streets on the east side of town get, stops being patched, 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 patched and be redone? We're going to have to look at those things and that's taking care of our diverse population because that's where most of them live. So if we're going to have these conversations, we need to be very real and very open, um, and transparent and how our decisions will affect everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, let's go to, uh, Counselor Wong, then interim town manager, uh, Phil, and then we'll move to, uh, Merritt and Di Lorenzo.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. Um, some of my notes include the existing government model. Government typically, we settle for slow and steady, um, rather than embracing, um, efficiency, due diligence. Um, so when we have opportunities to grow and we have these visions, we typically, we lack the data in Bloomfield to support some of these, these visions. And it's going to take strong, um, consensus to lean into some of these initiatives that require all of us to agree. Um, and, but I know that's kind of spinning off of some of the weaknesses that we kind of, um, discussed last time. But, um, the threat is lack of data. We don't have data to support, you know, the plans and the visions that we have. We think that there are problems and we've heard that there are problems, but we don't have data to say, yes, this is a problem. So just being, um, just being, you know, just being able to take the risk and as a whole innovative, um, which is really not in the government model. It's really, um, you know, not typically what we've seen in the past decades from a municipal standpoint. Um, I don't, I think Counselor Curtin hit, hit on this a little bit, um, but politics, politics is the biggest threat, I think, to a lot of these initiatives moving forward. We can have these great robust conversations and we can have great ideas and programs. But if we nine don't agree or we can't vote on the actual priorities, nothing's going to happen. And these great conversations are going to kind of, um, get brushed under the carpet. Um, and more zooming in a little bit, the biggest, one of the biggest threats, it's an election year. So, you know, we all know that, um, in politics and, and relationships are going to get in the way of our, our ability to see past that and really make the decisions that are best for the residents of this town, no matter how, um, how much it may impact the individual. So I just wanted to get a little more specific there. Thanks.
Uh, before I move on with the remaining four comments, who folks have made comments, I just want to open up the floor to, uh, to Sharon, Counselor Politis, or, or India, if you have anything you want to add. Um, if not, then we'll go on to these other folks who've, who have already made comments.
JL, you've also forgot the town manager. He was supposed to be next.
Oh yeah, you're, thank you. Uh, he slipped my mind. I apologize. Uh, so Phil, I apologize. No hard feelings. This is where I have my document position that covers you sometimes. So I, I, uh, I lose track, so I apologize. Um, so you're one of the ones who hasn't made a comment yet.
Well, I'm, uh, thankful for your comments. I wasn't offended in the least. Uh, a couple of things, picking up on, uh, Councilwoman Wong's comments about, uh, politics. Two years ago, uh, the town hired Mercer, which is an international, uh, recruitment search firm. And their head of local government practice came to Connecticut. And, uh, I was interested in talking to him about what was going on in the town manager, uh, a search placement, uh, business. This is two years ago now. And he said one of the big trends was that the adversarality of Washington was seeping down into state and local politics. So I would echo that, uh, there seems to be, and I don't see that really here in Bloomfield, but it's a potential, uh, threat if we're going to look at it. The other thing I was just going to bring up was the, the issue of intergovernmental relations and state mandates and federal mandates. Uh, we're at the bottom, we're at the bottom of the hill. And, uh, you know what flows down downhill. And so very often the municipalities are the recipient of programs that the state or federal government wants to implement, but don't, don't have the money to do or the resources to do that. So I think that's been a, uh, an issue concern and, uh, uh, threat, if you will, for the forty to fifty years that I've been in this business. So it's, it's a constant, uh, reminder that you do have to have a sustainable, uh, infrastructure, both phys- physical, but fiscal and also deliberative, uh, in nature to be able to take on these things that, that come, uh, from other sectors. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else who wants to make a comment who hasn't said something yet?
JL, we received an email yesterday which made me think of, um, cybersecurity attacks as a threat.
Wow, okay. Good one.
And, um, because you said that, or that, um, threats and opportunities are external, wouldn't fit our failure to take advantage of our opportunities become a threat?
Possibly. So, uh, think about, yeah, these could sometimes be two sides of the same coin. So there could be, you know, you know, if we don't, for instance, take advantage of some post-COVID-19 funding, it could have a, it could become a threat to some programs that we're providing. So absolutely. I do think cybersecurity, however, is in and of itself a good threat to consider just because the rise of cybersecurity, um, especially within the last five to 10 years, I think it's a very, very real threat that everyone needs to be concerned about. Okay. Any other new comments? If not, I'm not trying to rush. All right. So let's go with Counselor Merritt, Counselor Di Lorenzo, Counselor Goff, and Counselor Curtin in that order.
Am I unmuted?
You're, you're fine. We can hear you, sir.
Okay. Um, I, I have several, um, threats. But I think the one, most important one is, is personal money. And I, I, I'm watching Congress now and how the Republicans are being very cheap. And they're being told that we really need to go big and they're not going to do it. They didn't do it during the depression. They didn't do it during the great recession. And it hurt, I mean, it hurt the economy from coming back. And I, I see that a problem here in town too. And we get all obsessed about not increasing taxes. And I think our taxes have actually been, in a relative sense, been slipping back. And, and the big concern always seems to be people like the Alice population, how they can't afford increases in taxes. Well, that doesn't, increases in taxes doesn't affect them that much. If, if a family only pays $4,000, um, in taxes, um, 2% of that, say we increase taxes 2%, what, what is that? Eighty bucks? And hey, I just think, I think we ought to be doing, and what are we going to do? Hurt services to that very population. We, we need to do the paving of roads. We need to provide the social services. And I even talk about even giving them a hundred dollar certificate to spend in, in local restaurants. Uh, and that would well offset any tax increase. So I, I think we're, we're being a little cheap and I don't think that's good for us alone. And I think, I think we really ought to look for ways of helping out the Alice population. And I don't think it's by keeping taxes down. That, that would help out Cigna, but I don't think it helps the Alice population. Uh, I have other concerns that, um, we have obviously, uh, problems because of our, being next to Hartford and all the, we have a very relatively high crime rate, which we don't like to admit to, but it's caused by bordering on Hartford urban problems. And those are, that's a threat. And it's something I think we're dealing with pretty well, but, um, it's still a threat. Another one is EverSource, our power source. It's bugging me that I'm going to have to buy a generator because EverSource is doing such a lousy job. Um, and it's going to cost me what? 10,000 or more? Because I live on a wooden street and trees keep falling down, you know, loss of power. Now, we can do something about that. We sued them, what, 10 or 15 years ago along with Simsbury? And they did some things that caused us not to lose power so much for a long period of time. Now it's coming back. I think we ought to think about suing them again. So those are my threats.
Thank you. And, uh, Counselor Di Lorenzo?
Yes, thank you. I'll make this brief. I really just wanted to actually add something to our opportunity list. Uh, just as a follow-up to Deputy Mayor Mann's comments, I think one of the things we missed was we have some very active commissions and boards here in Bloomfield. And I think, for example, the CEEC does quite a bit of work, uh, talking about climate change and talking about, you know, um, doing the solar panels and the home energy audits. So I think that that's an opportunity that we could leverage. And there are other boards and commissions as well that have been very active in the town of Bloomfield. And I think we should, you know, utilize those sources to, to help us. And, uh, that was just one example. So I just thought we should add that to the opportunity list. So that, that's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor Goff, and then Counselor Curtin.
Uh, thank you, JL. Um, yeah, the, um, I, I want to say two things. One of the things I, I just- One of the things I just wanted to go back to what Council Wong said, because I, I agree completely. You know, I, I think the big threat and, and a big challenge is just the, the nature of entropy or not entropy, inertia, inertia in, in government and the difficulty of making any kind of change. Status quo, you know, status quo is very difficult to move away from. Not that you always should, not that radical change is always the right thing, but I do think, I do think it is an attitude. And tied to that, I think a weakness, you know, that, that Council Wong pointed out, I think a weak, a big weakness is our lack of ability to either gather and or use data. You know, we make, statements are made and a lot of times they are made without any backup data. And we really need that to make informed decisions. So I, I, I really applaud that. I really think that's something that, you know, not only we as a council, but the administrator, you know, we need to embed that. We need to embed that thinking in the administration and really all those boards and commissions, everything we do needs to be data driven. I did also want to make one comment. I certainly agree that as an external potentially existential threat, I certainly agree the climate change and other environmental problems such as pandemics are, are on the threat list. But I would also make a comment and we'll, I know this council will discuss this more in the next council meeting. I think that the climate change resolution from the C E C is going to come forward. I certainly support that. I certainly support that as being a threat. But I also think we need to recognize the climate change is a tertiary threat. It's not a primary threat. It's a threat on down the line. It's, it's a, it's a threat that's been generated by lots of levels of core thinking and core recognizing what the real problems are. Real practical problems are unrestrained growth. That is the problem that leads to climate change. And we, you know, we need to understand that in everything we do. And this gets back to something I think Council Curtin mentioned, and I think it's been, and Deputy Mayor Mann mentioned. You know, we have to, especially as we're coming out COVID and think, think about our strategies. We have to be thinking of a long-term sustainable strategy. Sustainable strategies, you know, are not, you know, they are not consistent with rapid unrestrained growth. So that's why we get climate change. And we really need to understand how, it, it sort of goes back to the data issue. We, we need to understand how the pieces go together so that we can actually tackle fundamental problems instead of ending up with tertiary problems that we really can't, you know, I mean, climate change is largely baked into fire. And, you know, we need to mitigate it, but we're not, you know, we need to address the underlying issues that, that have led to. Thanks.
Thank you. Consulor Curtin?
Uh, thank you, JL. I just wanted to make a couple of brief comments, follow-ups on some stuff that I heard. I, I truly do believe that keeping taxes down is something that we also should strive for. I think that's important. Now, I say that to say, the only way we can do that is to make sure that we're generating more revenue. And where does that come from? It comes from economic development, you know, bringing those companies in, pay more taxes. That helps in that area. So I think I agree with Consulor Merritt that it's not realistic to keep it down, but we can do that if we're able to generate new revenue. That's, that's the key in that area. And there's something that we talk about data. And I think a threat that I see is too often, and I say this in a good way, and I'm also included in this. I think we have a really good council here who is in tune, who wants to do different things, grab data and so on. But I think that's a threat because that's not our job. Our job is not to, you know, get those data, put it in place. That's the town manager's job. So I see that as a major threat and the next town manager, it's imperative. It's imperative to include that in the job requirement to make sure that this person coming in is focused on that objective. That's something that I strongly believe. And I just want to go back to my initial statement in regards to maintaining our diversity. I came from Brooklyn and I can tell you, there were a lot of economic development that happened over the, the last ten, fifteen, twenty years. And the one thing that Brooklyn was dealing with is gentrification, especially in the downtown area and so on, where you had a lot of folks who were able to live there prior to gentrification and they couldn't. So I think what they did was to make sure that affordable housing was included in their economic development, to make sure that folks who are living on a certain income can still live in that community. And that's what I was trying to get to when I talked about maintaining our diversity. I think we have a, we have a good split. The last data that I remember is fifty-seven, twenty-nine percent and seven percent Hispanic. I think fifty-seven percent black, twenty-nine percent white and seven percent Hispanic and it goes on. So that's where I was getting to. As we look forward, economic development, we have to make sure that the environment that we create and we're still making sure that folks that may not be able to live here with economic development and increasing property taxes and so on are basically excluded from that. So to maintain that, we want to make sure that we create that space for folks to still be able to come and live in Bloomfield. I just wanted to make that clear. Thank you.
We're going to take these last two comments. We're going to do a break. And I just want to remind everybody, I think everybody's contributions are valuable. This is not, this is, don't feel this is a space where you have to defend your thought. This is not, or even, even provide a strategy to address it. Our goal is to really just document some ideas and we'll move on to that, you know, next steps. So let's hear from Deputy Mayor Mann, then Council Wong, then we will take a break and then we'll come back with part two of this kind of conversation.
Thanks, JL. I just wanted to pick up on this discussion about data analysis. Certainly we're at a point in technology when we should be able to take advantage of and utilize our data a lot better. Question that comes to my mind, or the issue that comes to my mind that we have a possible threat is are we staffed in a, in a manner to deal with that data to get the job done? Now, I know municipalities, you know, there's not a lot of, usually not a lot of turnover. And usually things are done the way they've always been done. Well, that's why we've always been doing it. But there are areas in which we need to take, really have a look at to see whether or not the staff is adequately supported and the proper people are in the proper place. We had a, we did try to tackle that a few years ago with a, an analysis that sort of went off the boards. But I think that's extremely important. Are we positioned, if, if we want to position ourselves to be in a certain place with regard to our economic development and our, our, our image, our community image, we have to make sure that the staff is prepared, properly prepared and capable of dealing with that, dealing with the, what it takes to analyze data, what it takes to, to get the job done. And I think we have, that, that could be, that's a threat. Based by, based on some of the comments I've heard from staff in the past, in and present, there is gaps. And that's a management concern and it's a concern to getting the job done.
Thank you. Council Wong?
I think just real quick, I just wanted to kind of snowball off of Council Curtin's comments and I guess a little bit of what the deputy mayor said. I know in addition to needing revenue to fund innovation or the vision, if you will, we can also look to make some of our operations from a department standpoint more lean and reallocate resources from other departments rather than just raising taxes to support this. We got to look hard. We got to take a deeper dive. We got to get that data, right? So we don't always have to just raise taxes. We can, we can fund smaller projects by reallocating and directing resources to places like social and new services so we can make sure that our Alice population, we don't raise taxes on them, but we do support them from a program standpoint. And then just diversity. I, I love that everyone's talking about this. And it's important because our town is diverse, but also the decision makers need to be diverse too. And to India's point, we have to have those folks that have a seat at the table. But a lot of our commissions, a lot of our committees, our subcommittees of the town are not diverse from an age standpoint, from a color standpoint, from an ethnicity standpoint. So we have essentially the same group of people making the decisions over and over again through all aspects of the town and influencing policy. So yes, our town is diverse, but the folks that are making the decisions, I don't see much diversity there. So I really applaud Consulor Calhoun's efforts this year to making sure that we get the word out on some of these vacancies on these really important commissions like the E D C, like the C E E C, Wetlands Commission, which is pretty diverse though. So I just wanted to make those comments and make sure that we all knew that it, it's diversity through and through that we really should be looking at. Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. Great, great conversation. Very robust. It's eleven twenty-three by my clock. Let's, let's plan a fifteen minute break so we can look to come back here at eleven thirty-eight or so. We'll pick this up and we'll move on to the next phase. But thank you all for very productive. You know, it's amazing what we come up with in, in ninety minutes of just kind of having a focused conversation. So we'll see you all in about fifteen minutes. Be a few folks. Let's see, is everybody refreshed from their, from their breaks here? Ready to go? I want to make sure, let's see, Mayor, are you on the line? So we'll give for a few seconds, Consul Di Lorenzo, are you back on the line yet? All right. So we'll give these folks a couple of few, few seconds to, to get to log back in. And we can see Ms. Sharon's face for the first time today. She's decided to, to grace us with her smile. I think this got a little too cold outside. She had to come get some warmth. Consulor Curtin, are you online? Are you tricking us with your picture there?
No, I'm online. I'm just trying to grab something here. So I could hear you.
That's fine. Thank you. Thank you. I'll just check it in. I don't, I don't want to start with, before we have everybody back on, so. All right. Consulor Di Lorenzo was back. Let's check one last time on, on India. Are you, are back online with us?
I'm here.
Right. Mayor Suzette, are you back online yet? Okay. She's still refreshing. Consul Politis, I know you're on, on mute because of your circumstances. So hopefully you're back online too. So let's give the mayor a few more moments and then we will jump right on into this next phase of our discussion today. Looks like the mayor is back with us. I think she's all set. All right. So we're going to, we're going to move our conversation forward. And given our time and what I would like to, to be able to, to offer as a deliverable into this ongoing conversation is I want to, unfortunately, not being live, this is one of those times I wish we were in the same room together because I could just pull up the whiteboard and we can mark it up and, and color code it. And I've already done some of that with the slot analysis and that'll be one of the things I do deliver to you. I've color coded some of the responses that are, to me, that are, can be grouped together. And I think there are definitely some themes that have surfaced kind of organically. And we want to identify those and kind of identify, identify those as being some strategic priorities. Now, from there is really going to be the work of how do we take these strategic priorities then and distill them down into some goals that we can measure, which then can become some action plans. And I want to give some insight on that as well. So I want to first start with, just with some broad observations. Then I want to open up the floor to some conversation about those observations. There is, and I, I want to kind of start with, I'm, I'm not putting these in any particular order, but I think we should consider them as I present them is, the first thing I see as a general need for this organization is for us to become a strategic organization. And I'll explain to you kind of what I mean by that. Is we come together and we meet, and I think we even have goals and we have plans. It seems to me, just from my interactions with you all and hearing you all, that there is a disconnect that sometimes happens with us being intentional and being strategic about our planning. So I, one of the first recommendations, observations I have is that I don't know what your existing strategic planning process is or if there is one in place. But I highly recommend that there should be something where you all are either developing and publishing a five-year plan on a very specific regimented schedule that is clearly documented. So we know, for instance, you know, starting in twenty twenty-one, we're going to publish a five-year plan. And then we're going to, every five years, that's kind of a recurring thing that happens all the time. That there is then, from there, maybe we have, the way you do your strategic planning for a given year should be based on what's on that five-year plan. So that there is some cascading that's happening in terms of becoming a more strategic organization as opposed to kind of just, kind of randomly saying, hey, let's figure out what we're going to do this year. It should all be cascading down from first starting, of course, from your mission, vision and values. And then from there, that five-year plan, which identifies priorities and broader, longer-term goals you're trying to do. And then from there, we have our one-year planning, which is based on the five-year plan. So that there should be some type of strategic structure in place. Now, there may be. And it might be just the fact of just really activating it and making sure it happens. But that's one of my first kind of broad level kind of conversations is that transitioning to being, coming a more strategic organization. Once you put those structures in place, then we'll be able to do things like bring in, and one of my next points I'm going to talk about is data-driven decision-making. Data, data-driven decision-making is going to have less of a value in an environment that's not strategic, inherently strategic. Because then it's just numbers. So that's my first thought. And I see Consular Merritt, you have a com, a comment about that.
Yes, I have a question, Roy. If you mean by it, we have a five-year rolling plan for our capital budget. Always have, we've had it for a long time, where every year it gets updated. And your capital budget really is your, almost just by itself a strategic plan. It's what you're going to do about buildings and roads and things in the future. So it's, it's your capital budget. And, and so I think in a sense that is a strategic plan of some sort. And I, I, I was going to ask if that, is that what you mean? And if so, we do have one. I'm not sure we keep it up as well because most of the thought goes into what we can afford to do this coming year. And then the rest of it gets dumped into the future, sometimes unrealistically. But mostly we do plan so that we don't have bonding problems. We have a smoothed out bonding debt service. So that in a way that becomes what we can afford for the future. So is that what you mean?
I think that's definitely part of it. And that can serve as a kind of a foundation. But for instance, I'll just bring up something that just came up in our conversation today. The fact that the data has been presented that the, the median salary of our citizens is diminishing, is declining. So part of a five-year strategic plan could be, we want to see increases. We want to see that number start trending upward. That will be part of a five-year plan. And then from that five-year plan, you can say, well, this year, this is what we're going to put in place to address that particular issue. And then next year, we're going to do this. And what we do is we go back and we don't just plan arbitrarily. We put a plan in place, but then when we revisit it, we say, well, how well did the plan work? Part of a strategic structure, which I see is kind of grossly lacking here, is, is monitoring and evaluation of projects. But that's also part of my recommendation around project management. And I'll get to that in a second. I asked a very crucial question in our first session and the lack of a clear answer was alarming. I said, how do you know that you're successful in town leadership? What are you basing that success on? And, and it can't just, you know, I think somebody said, well, if we get reelected, I think that's, there's some merit to that. But you should be able to look at from a data perspective, how well we did, you know, what do we set out to do in the beginning of the year? How well do we do it? Now, we have the budget that does some of that for us because we can say we, we set this amount. How well do we do it? Now, we have the budget that does some of that for us because we can say we we set this amount and we stayed under budget. But that's only a part of the story. The other part of the story is how well. Did the programs that we placed perform in meeting some of those targets that we've laid out? You know, and we have to figure out a way to measure that so that when we come back each year, we can, we can effectively say. That plan that we put in last year was working, so let's keep it going. Let's increase investment. Let's move this. Do we have to do to keep that momentum going or to say? That's not working, so we need to think about. And this, you've said a lot in this conversation, we need to be able to reallocate some resources to some other places that are working. But without having any kind of structure in place to even make that decision is going to be extremely challenging. So part of it is first setting up. Big picture here is that strategic structure. We set out some some broad goals, some things that we want to work on as a town that we want to approach. Something that came up, for instance, is that. We want to improve our publicity. See, that would be part of a five-year plan. You would say five years from now. We want to be recognized as the premier town in Connecticut or the premier town in the Northeast. Then you work backwards from that goal, from that large strategic goal and say, well, what are we going to do this year? So this year, let's make an investment and making our website better because it's old-fashioned, it's slow, it's not working, blah, blah, blah. So that's the first, my first recommendation is having at least a structure in place, a strategic structure in place that the organization is following. That we're doing consistently. Councillor Goff?
Yes, thank you, Jay. I I I agree wholeheartedly with everything you just said with with one very minor exception.
Yes.
Um you said like a five-year plan for communication. And you made a comment about the five-year strategy would be. To be the best town in the Northeast or something. I think we have to have non, I I think that's. That really is a um unreasonable and unrated, unmeasurable goal. I I think the one thing you have to do in this is you have to. Set reasonable goals. So I think we could set some really incredible goals in terms of. How easily accessed and how easy, how much communication gets out. How the, you know, how how much, you know, we can measure that by citizen participation. When one of councillor Wong's comments. Was that we have a small group of people in town who participate and. You know, there are other reasons for, there are other things about that, but part of it is the communication, getting the word out. So I I agree with everything you said, except that I think we've got to set those goals to be. Goals that are measurable and are reachable and not, you know, not sort of flights of fancy.
Yep, no, I I I completely agree and I wasn't necessarily trying to do it in that sense. I was thinking more in terms of even. Some vision casting because vision is always about where you kind of want to be. And then you put your strategic goals to measure your progress towards that or even determining what that means. So I don't think there's anything wrong with. Having as a as a goal to say we want to be um a premier. Recognized as a premier town in Connecticut, but then the very next question is, is well, how do we know when we get there? What's going to be, how are we going to measure that? So I don't think there's anything wrong with having that as a goal. I I think that's a great goal to have. I think it's a great goal to tell your citizens, listen. Our goal is to be the premier town in Connecticut. Well, what does that mean? What does it mean to be the premier town, you know? And then you start laying out your metrics. We're going to measure it by. Uh we're going, this is target A, target B, target C and target D, and this is what we're trying to get. In the end of five years, you want to have these measures. We want to, you know, whether it is visits to our website, you might have that or. Um numbers around tourism, you might have that, you might have increases in population in the city. So there's all kinds of different things that you can think about. But the idea is that we're working towards something first as a goal that sometimes is a little bit outside of our reach, is a little bit aspirational. Um but that gives us something to coalesce around, but then I backed it up with some hard measures to your point. Where we can go back year after year and check and see where we are. It's not even about what we feel. Someone say, well, I think we're the greatest. Well, that doesn't, that's not helping. Let's look at the metrics that we've laid out. But that is a very good observation because generally speaking, you want to make. Goals um that are smart, that are specific, measurable, attainable, uh relevant and time-bound. By all means, that should govern that totally. Councillor Wong and Councillor Curtin, and then I'm going to share my next few observations. Yes.
Uh thanks, Jayle. I just wanted to echo kind of the first couple of themes that you you said. I do agree. Um uh from a five-year strategic approach standpoint, I do know to councillor Mayor's point, we do have. Uh five-year capital budget um for ventures and things like that and having a five-year strategic approach. Aligning with that, how we spend dollars should certainly match up or, you know, dual path or however we want to. Um do that so we can align priorities internally and how we spend dollars. Data analytics, I think that that is an ongoing theme that I hope we um continue to have some robust conversations and. Uh make that, to your point, in regards to metrics, make that one of our core values from an internal operation standpoint, like, hey, what are? Let's do database decision-making, which is data analytics. And project management methodology, we we don't have that methodology or a streamlined methodology within town operations, so I totally agree with you. On that and and just seeing what that would look like in the future from a five-year plan standpoint. And how that aligns with the current governance process, if there, if there is one, I'm not sure that there is. Um I know, I don't think that that's a trend in in government. As far as having an internal governance process, like a phased gate approach, if you will, um or. Just the methodology in general, as far as do we have the talent, do we want to invest here? What is that going to take from personnel standpoint? And so those are just some of the the thoughts. So I I totally agree with some of your initial comments. Thanks.
Yep, and I think that, and I'm, I said, I have a few more observations, but that's just the first kind of the foundation is really. Thinking about what it means for us to be a strategic organization. Um it's not my place to tell you what that framework looks like. I think there's tons of framework we can use, but there should be one that everybody knows that we're using. Um and that we're kind of filed, that's guiding us. And I also want to highlight the fact that. But you also mentioned having those values and I think that's so key. So if, for instance, we determine that. Data-driven decision-making is a value of this organization. It makes it much easier in times of conflict over priorities because we go right back to our values. Say, well, what does the data say? Um or if we're going to value, um I think Mary was talking about it earlier, was saying, you know. Well, do we make this investment in the greenway or do we make this investment in these other projects that can benefit um some of our other citizens? When you have those values in place, it's easy to kind of say, hey, our values say this is what is the priority and then we can, you know, it helps to guide that conversation a little bit better. Uh councillor Curtin, and then I'm going to share my rest of my observations. Yes, sir.
Uh thank you, Jayle, and I think your points are well-taken that you've outlined. I think the the key component, when I think about. What you have mentioned is is having someone to manage that. It's easy for us to put things in place, have objectives. But if you don't have someone managing that process and and having some sort of timeline and making sure that the various departments and areas meet those. Timeline, then everything falls through. So I believe as we go through the budget process, I know we've all talked about it, is having a project manager. I think outside of the town manager, having someone who works in tandem with the town manager to make sure those. Initiatives are are being met and the timelines. I'll give you an example. I believe we have great uh. Leadership in 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 town of in the various department. But what I've noticed too often, they're not only. Le- working on initiatives, but they have to be the ones managing those projects at the same time. I mean, we have an engineer department, you know, is could be a great engineer, but in trying to manage the project may not be. That person's strength. So that's where it falls through. So I believe that everything that you've outlined. It could only be attained by having someone to manage that uh process. Someone who's focused, someone who has the skills to be able to do that will be a major uh plus for for this organization.
Thank you for that. So and I, so you talk about strategic priorities. I think one of the ones is to become strategic is like really, it seems kind of. Oxymoronic, but it 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 makes sense. So let me move on to my next um area of observation is this. And um and I guess I'll use you as a segue, your comments, councillor Curtin, is the fact that. To me, this organization is lacking in terms of project management. So, you know, you segued me perfectly. Um now, solving that problem, well, first of all, let me state why you need to address it and I, you really said it very eloquently. Project management as a methodology is a separate skill set in and of in and of itself. And project management also is a universal skill set, which means that if I am a skilled certified project manager. I can manage projects of any kind. It the the actual substance of the project doesn't matter. Um I'm literally the one making sure things are happening and and moving in a right path. Part of the project management functionality is this, is even helping to determine which projects do we pursue. Based on um data-driven, data-driven decisions. So. A good project manager is especially when you're a part of a project management team of organization. Part of what you do is you're brought in to even say. Evaluate the rate of of return on investment in this project or we say we have four options ahead of us. How do we pick which ones is going to get that that investment of real dollars? Part of that conversation, not the total conversation, but part of it's got to be. What are we going to get back for real dollars invested? And that's part of what a good project manager or a project management. Um methodology will bring to the process to look at it not from a partisan standpoint, not even from a uh. A feel-good standpoint, because there's some things that we can do that just feel good and look good. They'll look at it at the hard number and say, well, listen, if we're going to invest this, this is what we can expect to return. And and you could look at all of them and that might help to prioritize where projects come. That you are prioritized to do now or something that you won't do. Um so I think that there needs to be some type of investment. I do see your hand, Mayor, in. In our ability as an organization to manage projects. Now, does that mean we hire a full-time project manager? It could. Um in this day, they're just kind of the ad hoc project manager over most of the projects. Um that's one approach, another approach you can consider, and I don't have the data to say which one is better. Um you could, um one of my next things I'm going to talk about is workforce development is you can build in some development around some of your your existing leadership. To give them some of the skills of project management. So now also then when hiring, moving forward, you can also make that a criteria for some of your positions as well. So you could make a decision to say. Instead of hiring project managers, we're going to train all of our leaders in project management methodology. Um and then moving forward, we'll make that a requirement for hiring in these positions because we want you to have that skill set as well. Um so that's another thought that you can have or even a hybrid of the two. Um there's also abilities to 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 contract that workout. Um I like, I personally like the idea of having at least one full-time project management staff and then. Maybe having a contract, a sub subcontract out assistance to help with certain projects. But um I think it's something that this team needs to think about. As a priority to me because so many of the things that you've talked about in terms of weaknesses and threats. Could be mitigated by having solid project management in place. Um so Mayor, Suzette?
Thank you. I just wanted to add a couple of things to that. So we're in budget season, so we know. That this will definitely need to be a budget item. I know that we looked at this two years ago. Um the previous council, we talked about it and when the budget was shake, was whittled down, so was that. Um but now we know that it's it's definitely a priority. I know that the deputy mayor and myself have already uh uh approached the town manager. Looking at some um possible hybrids, looking at some certifications and things like that. So I do believe that this has definitely raised to the top and I'm sure. That all the councillors would be in agreement to make sure that we put funding behind this, whatever we do. If it's going to be an individual, if it's going to be our top-tier leaders, if it's going to be a hybrid, whatever it is. Um please be mindful that it's going to cost, so we need to. Look at that when we're doing our budget session, but we have already started. As I said, the deputy mayor and myself have already approached the town manager with some. Uh suggestions on in regards to that. Thank you.
Great. And I I see you, councillor Goff, and get to, and I would recommend with whatever, this is another recommendation, however, direction you choose to really move in. Um and I'm going to talk about workforce development next. Is that I think this is one of those kind of trainings that we should make available to our administrative staff. Regardless of what we move moving for, this should be something that's just part of the training that we that we um provide. Because even if you're not functioning as a project manager, to understand the project management process can help you to be a better project team member. Um and so I think that is a a benefit there. Um councillor Goff?
Yes, thanks, Jayle. Um no, I and I think that's, I I I certainly agree with your point. I agree with your point, actually, not only on project management. But on data-driven uh uh data-driven decision-making. I think that our staff also needs to be. Trained in that and much more facile with uh doing that. I just want to come back though to uh the comment the mayor made, which. Um I I I think we. We need to be careful because we need to go back, you know, we need to go back to this more broader thing. I don't think there's anyone on this council, and perhaps I'm wrong, that does not agree with the need for more project management. Where I think we're going to have to really discuss all of these things with respect to needs for the budget. Is I personally don't believe it's just a matter of. We need this, let's add it on. I think this goes back to data-driven decision-making. This goes back to. Understanding where we are relative to other towns, where we are with respect to. The environment uh uh around us that that we need to look at. We need to look at the big picture and, you know, I think we have been sort of stuck for past few years in terms of making changes within the. The shape, if you will, the the organizational structure of towns, you know, we. We have, we we have been stuck because the only, the only control we have is the budget. I mean, really, I think councillor Curtin has made this point several times. It's not really our job and nor should it be to. Micromanage the organization of the town administration. The town administration, you know, the way our government is set up. Town administration is a really a separate function. And from the council and what really needs to be happening is. Town administration needs to be looking at how to run things efficiently and I. Think we're in agreement about project management, but that doesn't mean just adding on. It means how do we reshape things? So that we can find those resources to do that. Um so I just want to be very careful about um any conclusion just simply being an add-on to what we have now. Thanks.
Councillor Goff, I think you are miss uh misunderstanding what I was stating. What I'm stating is it's going to cost something. So while we go through our budget process and look at what we have and what we need. We need to be mindful that this, however, has risen to the top as a priority. So whether it's reallocating resources or allocating funds. Those are the decisions that we're going to have to make and those decisions are going to be made during our budget process.
I I agree. Our control of this is much.
And that that was it, sir. Period and point blank. Thank you.
Yeah, no, we're.
I I I love, I don't think you're saying two different things at all. So and that's why I kind of presented it in the order that I'm presenting it. To your point, councillor Goff, is that um unless you make some changes just to our our kind of our DNA, if you will. Adding a project manager will help. Mitigate some issues, but it won't have the greatest impact unless you make some greater changes as well to the overall environment so that project manager could even thrive. Um and part of that is, and I'm going on down on my list of my my things, is. To shift to more data-driven decision-making and what it takes to make that happen. Um and I think that it's on a couple of different planes. First of all, there is training that needs to happen for our workforce. Uh my last observation that I'm going to make in this area is workforce development is training all of our staff to be able to take advantage of how to access data, number one, and how to apply it. But then to make that happen, we have to think about how do we make data available? What does data access look like for the town of Bloomfield and especially the administrative staff? Um is there a place, is there a path where we can go to get the data that we need? Um and if that's not in place, then it's going to be hard to even to have as a as a as a principal. Data-driven decision-making. So even looking at how do we manage data? How do we gather data? What does access to data look like? What data is necessary? And you know, what does that look like in terms of IT that came up as one of the things on the list, IT infrastructure? How do we make it accessible? Um and that's something to think about because if you, if one of the expectations that we're going to be a data-driven organization, then you also have to make sure to have. Access to the right data at the right time. Um now, that is a separate thing in and of itself. That that could be part of a tenure plan just because it does, there's a lot involved with that. But at least having some intentional thinking around what does that look like? What could it look like? What should it look like? And what are some ways we can move towards that? I think that'll also help all everything else so that if, when I'm making decisions as a leader in the in town. There should be a place I can go to get the data that I need. Um but I do think it's going to be essential and I think that's a theme that has come up over and over, over again in our conversations. Um so that's something else that I, as an observation that I have, um and I'm good, councillor Curtin.
Yeah, Jayle, I just want to quickly follow up on something that councillor Goff said. I just want to kind of elaborate a little bit more on it. And I think I I used to struggle with this myself. And I think we all do because we come from the private sector. We're not used to this, but I think we have to be. We as a body elected of elected officials have to be careful because. Our role and job is not to infuse and say, okay. What should happen here or what should happen there in regards to personnel? Because you look at a board of directors, you know, they don't really care about how, let me just back up. They do care how the 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 organization is managed, but they look at it from a high level. The day-to-day operation, the CEO.
The day to day operation, the CEO, CFO, financials, they're the ones that are responsible. And are hold accountable to making sure those things happen. I think what happens sometimes not, I think by default. Is we're in this mindset where we think that we need to be into those areas. And I think that's a that's a threat, because then that could contradict. The person who's in the position to do that job, the the CEO of this organization. So that's the reason why I think it's important to hire the right person. To have him or her execute those initiative from a more high level policymaking standpoint. So I think we have to be careful to differentiate the roles. Because we're always going to butt heads into that area, and that's counterproductive for the organization. Being successful. So I think that's something that we really need to work on to make sure that we separate when it comes to those. Key roles in in that in that sense. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and I I I appreciate the clarity. I also do believe in in situations like this, even like the town manager. We we need to even make sure that we're providing some guidance in in terms of. Just what are our priorities? I think even coming down to hiring decisions, what are what are some of the values, things that we're looking for to help move the town forward? Um. But I think it is key for us to know those roles and be clear. So this data driven decision making, and the last thing, and this is kind of my list of what I will call for you all. These are, these are things that you you have to address. So I don't I don't think these are optional. So I think you need to address having a strategic structure. Some investment to project management, data, data driven decision making, and last on this list of. What I think are must haves is a a look at what does workforce development look like for the town staff? Um. So what that's come up as a theme over and over. So what has come up? People say that there's there's not enough Turner, which is an interesting kind of problem to have. There is not enough movement, folks kind of getting their roles and staying them for life. And there's nothing wrong with that, but the issue is is that are they growing in their role? So you can stay in the role, but are we providing opportunities for them to upskill? Is it nimble and agile enough to respond to the changing landscape that's happening in municipality governance? And 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 everything that's going on, it's it's a different world five years ago than it was today. Let reality is a different world a year ago. You know what I mean? So we have to make sure that our work that we're providing opportunities for our workforce to develop. So if folks kind of stay on for a lifetime, okay, that's fine. But you're not going to just be stagnant in that role forever. We need to make sure that we're upskilling you. That we are growing. That doesn't necessarily mean promoting. It just means you're growing in your role so that your skills are reflecting the needs. So there needs to be a looking at a couple of different ways I I I would, you know, uh. Recommend is to look through all the roles and identify, and this is not necessarily your job, but you know, maybe through the town manager to kind of say. What are the core competencies for every role that we have in 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 government? Let's take every position, let's identify what skills are needed to be, and then let's take an assessment to see where our folks are. Identify the gaps, and then you can put some training in place to help address some of that. Now, that was a big pine sky kind of broad approach to it, but the picture that I'm trying to share to you is that we've got to look at our workforce. We've got to look at the current skills of our workforce and look at our desired skills of our workforce and see if there's some ways that we can bridge that gap. Um. And that should also inform how we hire in the future. Because we might determine there's some skills that we didn't think were essential ten years ago, but guess what? They are now. And we'll make them requirement, or we'll make that part of the training as part of this particular role. Councilor D Lorenzo.
Yes, thank you. I I just wanted to make a quick comment because this comes up a lot and. You know, one of my big issues with this is this is fine for the. Non-union workforce, okay, we can do these kinds of things, but we have three unions in this town. There is no way that that union person is going to. Want to expand beyond what their job description says they're supposed to do. So while I like all these things and I agree that we could offer training and so forth, if it's not in their union contract, they're not going to do it. And that's how I feel, and I I think in order for us to move our staff forward. We have to change the way we negotiate with our unions. And have them allow us to be able to update the job descriptions, make them more. You know, current, expand upon them, offer learning opportunities. And ask for the employees to be flexible enough to be able to want to do those things. But until we change the union contracts. Uh to that, to make them work that way, we're going to be in this continuous cycle because. I mean, one example, we had a. Uh, I don't know if I'm getting it all right, but I know that there was an example of a clerk typist. And we were told by HR that that job description hasn't been, they can't do, when they were going to hire for a vacancy. The job description is so out of date. But they can't do anything about it because it's part of the union contract. So how are we supposed to overcome some of these things, these hurdles, unless? We get more from the unions. So that that's my comment. That's how I feel.
And I uh, that's way outside my scope to answer that, but I think that. I mean, to to your point, it has to be addressed. I mean, I think that's that's what the bottom line is. So we that if we have to come. And change the way we approach the unions to talk about some of those things. Let it once again, if we can bring some data along with that conversation, so it's not just a conversation about, I think, I feel it's, this is what the data says. Um, to have some negotiations around some of those things. In the meanwhile, um, I do think, and I'm an adage, and this is kind of just kind of old school, is. I do what I can until I can do what I want, you know, so I look at the areas where I do have control over areas that I I do have some direct influence.
Exactly.
Create something.
I agree.
No, um, and that could be, you know, bringing in trainers, it could be investing in a learning management system and making it available to everybody. That might be a good way to do, say, hey, this is the trainings that we're going to make available on this learning management system. You can, you, it's not mandatory, but it's there and making it accessible. So even those folks who are on those unions may take advantage of it because they. Believe in personal growth, but it may not be mandatory. So identifying kind of what can we do now with what we have to have some. Then the next time we have those conversations around negotiations, we're going to, we're going to be a little bit more intentional about that because we see where the need is. Um. And I I see your hands and get to, I just want to close this out really quick. Those are just some of the things that I thought were. Areas of things that really need to be on your list of what we need, we need to at least talk about that, because I think. These are going to be crucial to the organization from the inside out, if you will. Um. So um, Council Calhoun and then Council of Golf, and then I'm have a couple of other uh. Observations from your listings that I want to bring up in terms of strategy and priority. So Council, Council Calhoun and then Council of Golf.
Okay, thank you. Um. So before, and I I I don't want to seem as if I'm addressing your comments directly, uh, Councilor D Lorenzo. But prior to your statement. Um, what I was going to get at is assessments and evaluations for all employees are key. Um, yes, training, retraining is key. And that's from a union or non-union personnel. Because no matter if you are union and I am, I can talk from unionized workforce because I am. And assessment is everything. It 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 it's determined by the employee as. To see if they want that growth to the next level. They can stagnate themselves, but if you're at least meeting the goals or attempting to. Look outside of where your 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 job description is for growth potential. Yes, people can get stuck, but what are we offering and training for them to go to the next level? Outside of that particular uh job description, if there's a clerk typist too. I is that person willing to to work towards that? So, you know, there assessments and evaluations are key. So I I think we need to look more more at that. Again, as as Jill was just saying, training of our workforce.
Yeah, we are.
Yeah, try try retraining, retraining opportunities.
I'm all for it.
Absolutely, absolutely. Yeah, we need to look for a higher level of productivity here in the town. You know, if we we if there's someone that's identified as being stagnant.
I'm awful.
The supervisor needs to sit down with that person unless the supervisor is stagnant. There there's opportunities um that we need to address or readdress. And as we were all saying, Jill, you said um project management. Oh, my God, we need that in a huge way. Um, you know, like it's been said. Um, there there we have directors that may want to branch out into other things, but. Again, because your the project management skill set is not there. You know, it's one thing to go through project management training. But that director may not want to do that. They may want someone else to do the project management. While they kind of focus on their task and their skill set at 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 hand. So, you know, yeah, we need to fine tune our workforce development and especially in training retraining. Thank you.
Council of Golf.
Yeah, I'll be very brief because Council Calhoun just said a lot of the things I I. I will say, I think she said them very well, and I agree with that. I think the one other, the the two other very minor things is one. I think it's possible some of these positions just cease to exist. I mean. There should not be some positions that were, you know, especially at some levels that were started thirty years ago that even should exist anymore because. The the job description of what needs to be done has changed so much. Again, that, you know, as Council Calhoun correctly pointed, it's not just the employees in the union forces, the supervisors and the supervisors, the supervisors. This is the total view of how the organization looks like and how the organization seems to shift. Um. The one other thing I will mention to to Council D Lorenzo's point. Um, I also think we haven't done a real good job, we're, you know, of of bringing these things forward in terms of union negotiations. Um, I think the process has been very. Hi, um, opaque and hasn't really asked for a lot of our input because. We're sort of, and this is, this is me speaking from my impressions, we're sort of always taught the sort of uh talk to like. Well, you want that, but you won't get it because it was just a good arbitration and then you'll lose, you know, whatever. And I don't, that may, that may be the case, but I don't think that's really a very good point to stand on. I think we should be looking at how we modernize. We are not against our workforce. We are pro our workforce. But we want a workforce, we want a workforce that wants to grow with us. That's the whole point. And as Council Calhoun said, you know, the opportunities and the assessments, those go hand in hand with being, you know, with being a. Productive and happy employee. So I I think we have to really get out of this, you know, this goes back a bit to Council Wong sort of. Status poism of of how the the government structure works. We need to really be addressing that. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor Man and then Mayor Suzette.
Yeah, I think I'll be briefer than Councilor Golf. I just want to to uh. Uh, thank that the comments that have been made about workforce development and the support and kudos to Council Calhoun for bringing it even forward. I think, yes, we, if if you're going to make people want to come to work for Bloomfield, if you want to make Bloomfield special or functional. It starts perhaps at the workforce level. And I don't know about anybody else, but can anybody remember the last employee that was let go? For nonperformance or for whatever? I mean, I it's hard to imagine that in any organization, somebody's not pulling pulling their own weight, but they still hang in there. So I think the assessments and evaluations very key, and we have to set a standard. Thanks.
Mayor Suzette.
I'm going to be as briefer because I agree with everyone. Um, I do believe when it comes to uh contract negotiations, I think we should have a bigger say even going in. Right? The world has changed. We can't just say, okay, you're going to get two percent regardless of what you're going to do. Because it's in your contract, or you're not going to um do any update trainings because it's in your contract. I think we're going back to strategic strategy. We need to realize what our workforce needs to look like. The only employee that we have as a council is the town manager. All the other employees are underneath the town manager. But these union contracts binds us, right? They're binding contracts. They bind us. And how we feel that that workforce development should take place. They um how we feel if they're going to be evaluations and if those evaluations have a increase attached to them. Or have other consequences attached to them. I don't think we have that much um. Leverage as a town once we come into these contracts with the union. So I believe that we need to look at that because if not, we are going to be bound, period. Um. So that's what I just wanted to add to this uh thing, because here's the thing. For those for those employees that are not union, we can. Uh strongly encourage and or force, but is that really fair? Because the people that probably need to have these. Uh enforcement or encouragement, it doesn't apply to them. So I think we need to come up with a better system um of being able to say, these are the things that we need in a contract to the unions. And not just have the unions come and tell us what they need. Thanks.
Um. Before I get to Council Curtain, I just want to share just briefly, once again, this how what I recommend is approach for workforce development. Is um your first step is you want to just have a a a general look at your entire workforce. Examine every role, you know, and to uh Council of Goffs, you know, he was mentioning that that you're going to identify some roles that really aren't needed, that are redundant, that. Um, that have been folded up into other functions. Um. So that's going to be a challenging conversation because there there are going to be some folks that may not be needed, not the folks, but the role. So I think looking at the overall structure is the first thing. Who's here? Who's doing what what's needed? And then from there, you'd work individually for each of those roles, and you start asking yourself the questions. What competencies do folks need to be? Or better yet, before you even get there, what's going to be their task and their function? Then ask yourself what competencies are needed to do that successfully. Then then you move to the phase of what you're talking about assessments, where you start saying now what skills are our folks have. In comparison to those competencies that we've identified, and then you start seeing, well, how do we bridge the gap? So like I said, that's a general roadmap for that, but I think that that is going to be essential. Um, Council Curtain.
Uh, thank you, Jill. I just wanted to add just something quick to the conversation around personnel. I think another key area that we have to be careful that could also be a threat to the organization is that. We have to be mindful of what we say um in public. Um, I know there's different tools in place in executive session to discuss certain organizational structure, because what you do. If we're having these type of conversations in public, you could destabilize our uh workforce, right? Because when we're having these conversations, I believe there are healthy conversations to have. You don't want a workforce that's now on the edge, okay? Am I going to lose my position? Am I going to lose? So that's something that's key. I think this conversation is healthy, but we got to be careful how. It's communicated and how it gets across, because that could be a major threat to the organization where folks feel that, hey. There's too much volatility, too much going on. This may not be an environment for me. So I think we have to really manage. Communications around that. So that's just something I want to add to the discussion.
I think that is a good thought, and I I want to um highlight something that Deputy Mayor Man said is that. Um, if you think of this as an investment in workforce, and that's how it's communicated, it's. We want to make sure that you have the skills that you need to be great at your job. Um. One of the key elements of employee engagement is people want to um, Daniel Pink wrote in his book, um, Drive, the Surprising Truth About What Motivates Us. That mastery is one of those things that's a motivator. So we're providing them an opportunity to be a master at their job. Um. And that's what it is about. So so to your, I I agree with you, and that's how you package this whole conversation. And at the end of the day, we're making an investment in workforce. We're not trying to diminish it. We're trying to make it greater and better, and. That only happens by investing in you personally. But, and I will say this as a corporate training and development coordinator, as my nine to five. Is that I also have to create an opportunity for those who are not suited for the culture to be able to fire themselves. That's what I train my managers on. Is I still, I always tell them, I says, you don't fire people, people fire themselves. If if they're not willing to. To align themselves with the culture of the organization and meet performance, they've made the decision, not you. And so part of my training is we create an opportunity for folks. If it's not a good fit, there's a way as well to do that. And you do that by being very clear about what your what your standards are, what your culture is going to be, what your expectations are. And I don't think that's a, that does not inherently create a hostile environment, but we still have to manage a communication, to your point, Council Curtain, because it could be misconstrued. Um, you know, especially if I'm looking at it from an emotional standpoint. Um. Okay, um, now, these are next things I want to bring up. These are some. Things that came up in conversation that that you might want to consider to be a strategic priority or not, or to say this is important, something we can do later on down the line. But these are some things that came up that were from connecting some of those elements across the SWOT analysis. So I think that there's a great, um, and I I'm not using this term opportunity in terms of the SWOT analysis, but there is a a strategic opportunity for us to look at. In general, public publicity in marketing and communication. but there is a, a strategic opportunity for us to look at in general, public publicity and marketing and communication. And I think that you can make a few movements in this area that can have a wide impact. So a recurring thing through this conversation is that, and I love this conversation, is that Bloomfield is a great town. We're not doing a great job of telling the world about how great we are. So we take our strengths, which are all those things that you talked about, our ratings, our certified city services, our diversity. And I'm going to talk about that in particular later on, but really coming together and figuring out, how do we tell the world about this? And what that does is, is I think it's going to do a couple of things. It's going to make the people who live in the town feel better about living in the town and might engage them on another level. It will attract new population to help us maintain and increase our diversity, which is, is a great value to the town. Um, and also I think it's going to impact economic, um, development as well. Is because, um, I'm not into economic development, but I can only imagine if I was thinking about trying to bring my business, I want to bring my business to a town that number one, that people are going to want to be in, that my employers are going to want to live in. So I think that there should, there's an opportunity to look at what could it mean to have some increased investment thoughts, conversations around really our public, our publicity and our marketing for our town? How do we get out there? What are the channels? Where do we need to be? How do we need to do it? In the age of social media, what does that mean? Um, what does investment in that look like? Um, is it a possibility to leverage some talent in the town? You know, can we maybe bring some folks, right, who can do it, who are in the town already engaged in that? But I think there's a great opportunity there, something that you all have said repeatedly. One particular project in that, that I, I think that you should really consider is looking at your website. Because I think the website could be a big vehicle for a lot of what we're talking about in this particular area. Um, in, in addition to something that came up is opportunity to be better at communicating with our citizens. That can be attached to, to a website, but also to this larger kind of marketing publicity plan. Um, so I think that there's great opportunity there, um, that's come up throughout. Anybody have any thoughts that you want to share about that quickly? I'm just saying that that came from coalescing, coalescing some of the elements throughout the SWOT analysis. But anybody have anything to say about that? They want to share a thought? So let's go with, uh, uh, town manager. Folks have their hands up, we'll go through the list. So Tom, and you can kick us off.
Yes, I would just, I would just agree with you that the world's moving in a digital way. Uh, we still have a lot of people that are interested in print material. We're an older community. They've got one leg in the old world and one leg in the new world and struggling with, uh, the new world. We've seen that just with the, uh, registration process for, uh, the coronavirus vaccine system. You know, the, the inability to be able to master rudimentary, uh, technology, okay? You know, so we have a variety of different platforms, a variety of different outlets and a variety of different ways communicating. And none of them are, and I'm, I'm preaching to the choir here with the council because they've heard this from two, three, well, maybe not last year, but two years, three years, maybe even four years ago. And we need somebody to bring all this together. We need to coordinate the messaging. We need to go ahead and upgrade our website and other vehicles for connecting. Uh, so that's just my point. Thank you.
And, uh, I'm just going to go in, in the order I see on the screen. Um, Mayor Suzette.
Um, thank you, but I think Counselor Wong and Counselor Curtin was first, so I'll go after them. Thank you.
That's nice of you. Uh, Counselor Wong.
Yes, thanks. Uh, I, I agree with Phil, um, but to your point about the website, uh, that can be a contracted initiative that we can handle, you know, if we just really sit down and, and get a contractor to come in and do these things. Um, as far as making the website more, um, user friendly, it's, 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 it's a really bad functioning website. There's HTML pages upon HTML pages and it really prevents our, it really frustrates the public because a lot of them, to Phil's point, would like print material, but they can get it online if they get the correct PDF, they can print it at home. A lot of our, the elderly population, we think that they're not on, they're super, you know, um, tech savvy. They're on Facebook, they're getting, they're on emails, um, they have printers and they're ahead of the game, um, or they're catching up. That's just the world we live in, you know, they, they're here. And I think that if we really sit down and seriously think about what that website looks like, what it's going to take to get a contractor in here to just overhaul that entire, just the, the platform, we can do that aside from, of course, a publications person would be great. So they can manage the content moving forward, but we can easily get that taken care of from a user friendly standpoint. Websites are so, um, innovative right now where we can update it and then someone, and we can hire somebody in the next, you know, year or two years or whatever the case may be from a budget standpoint, and they can update the content as necessary. But it's really the backend piece that is suffering and it, and it really makes us super dated from a town standpoint. So that's just something I've heard, you know, and experienced for the last few years now. So I, I think that JL, to your, uh, Jay, yeah, JL, to your point, that's, um, extremely important. And I really want us to, as a council, to really sit there and think about what's the feasibility of putting some, um, some dollars into that, whether it be this year, next year, whether it be a part of the five-year plan, of course, you know, dollar is always, um, a thing, but, but I totally agree. Thank you.
Yeah, um, I'm going to get to Counselor Curtin. I, I, and the reason why I highlighted the, the website, because I think that's a, when you talk about publicity and marketing, that feels very intangible. Website is very tangible and that could become a vehicle that can just support some of these other things. And that's why I kind of added that on. Um, I, I wouldn't be surprised, and this is, I don't know, but I wouldn't be surprised if there's some citizen in your town who would probably do that work for you and who's skilled at it and will do it to have it on their resume or, you know, um, so you may be able to even get some of these services provided either at a highly discounted rate or even in some cases for free.
Student.
I mean, there's, I think there's opportunities there, even thinking about like publicity, somebody talking about leveraging that, the moniker, the, the best town to live in, 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 in Connecticut. Even come up with a town slogan and stuff, you can do a contest, you know, and, and let some citizens come up with something. And then you're not, you don't have to pay some outside PR firm to, to have the heart of somebody in the town who loves the town, you know? So there's other ways, I just, there's, there's a variety of ways to attack it than just having to feel like you have to, you know, spend a lot of money. So let's go with Counselor Curtin, Mayor Suzette, and then Deputy Mayor Mann.
Uh, thank you, JL. Uh, I think outside of, uh, our main objective and focus as council members in regards to policy initiatives and, you know, hiring a town manager and so on. I think another role that we have to embrace, uh, and think it's key, as a council, we have to sell Bloomfield. We have to be positive about the town. Uh, when we speak, when we go out, when we're in public, when we're at council meetings, our role is to bring a bright light on Bloomfield because believe it or not, everyone is watching, whether they live in Bloomfield, potential investors are watching. And you have to be able to tell your story, you have to be able to talk about the beauty about Bloomfield and why you should want to come here. So I think that's a key role that we, we, I don't believe we embrace as well as we should collectively. And that's something I think an initiative outside of the basic is for us to continue to be upbeat and positive about the town of Bloomfield.
Thank you. Mayor Suzette.
I agree with, um, everything that's been said. I do agree that we can find a, uh, uh, get a contract for someone to redesign our website. But I think it's important to have someone that's Bloomfield centric to be able to maintain it for us. We can have a great design and it still be a mess. Um, I do know, um, that the, there are students at the University of Hartford that's looking for internship programs. Um, I spoke with the town manager and the deputy mayor, um, so I believe that we can get some services that way. I do know that we do have some employees, um, some younger employees at the leisure services that's up on social media and probably would be able to, um, help us to maintain it once we get it started, whether it's maintaining a website, Facebook, Instagram. So I believe it's a matter of us sitting down as a council and deciding, once again, priorities and deciding how we can go about, um, putting our town in the best light possible. I thoroughly agree with Counselor Curtin that that is a job of every counselor. Um, we should be able to say great things about our town at the drop of a dime. But, um, I think being intentional about the messaging is going to be important. And I know that there are some things that, uh, we're looking at and, and, and talking about that would be brought to the council to help us to get to that place, even if it's just an informal, uh, stopgap until we can get something more formalized. Thank you.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Mann.
Well, thanks, JL. Um, I think people are beginning to realize how important this function is as well as the workforce development. And I, I, I really hope that, uh, we can, uh, keep these thoughts together when it comes to talk about the budget and maybe make some, make some of these decisions. I was glad to hear the comment of, of, of Counsel, Counselor Wong, uh, about the, the, the reality that there are a lot of elderly people, a lot of people in this community who, who, who do have access to, to internet and do understand and can work it out. And I think we fall victim too often to say, well, there's people that need print because how many? What's this data, the data-driven analysis is where this becomes important as to who are we talking about? How many people are there? What's our, what's our best placement of information to those few people or to the rest of the world? I think we have to make those decisions, uh, and, and I, and I also feel that, um, it's extremely important. If we don't advertise our community, if we don't promote our community, nobody will and we'll keep slipping further behind and, and deal with smaller issues. I think we can't leave our, uh, uh, the, the reality of Bloomfield up to the Hartford Current. They're not, they're not looking to promote the town. That's not their job. So if we don't do it, nobody's going to do it. And it, it fits everything we've been talking about. If we don't have that as a strong part of our, uh, tool in our quiver, then I think we're, we're missing a great opportunity.
Um, so, so in terms of this grouping, um, just a few thoughts before I move on to the next kind of observation. I think this is, this is an internal effort and an external effort. And by that I mean is how can we use these tools, these platforms to better communicate just to our citizens about what we're doing? Um, I'll, as an example, in my company, um, that I work for, that's one of our challenges is we're spread out all across the country. And we had to be intentional about having a system in place so that we all knew the great work that the people, so people in Connecticut would know the great work folks are doing in California. And what that does, that bolsters engagement in the organization. Um, and then what happens is your citizens end up becoming your best champions. So it is using these same platforms to communicate internally, but then to say, well, then how do we communicate outwardly? Um, and I think there is that grassroots thing that you can definitely engage some students at University of Hartford and citizens and put, put a group together and say, hey, I want you to come up with a plan. You all don't have to figure it out to say, hey, we want to increase our, our presence, our online presence. We want to put you together and you're going to come up with a plan and share it with us. That may not cost anything, you know, and then talk about implementation using the internships in that way. But then I think there's also some other areas where we may have to be a little bit more intentional, especially on a national landscape. There might be some publications that we might want to advertise and there might be some associations that we want to align ourselves with. And that may take a little bit more of a concerted effort. And that's where there may be some investment in real dollars and it may not be. Once again, you might be able to leverage talent on a college level to come up with some plans. Um, so that's in, in terms of that bucket, if you will, I think there's a lot of moving parts in it, but I think there's a few moves you can make that can have a good, a, a, a very kind of widespread impact. Um, any more comments about kind of publicity, marketing, communications before I move on to the next point? And this is not, this is, I'm gathering this from what you've said in the SWOT analysis. So, um, another thing that, that's really big, like out of all the things we've talked about is this concept of diversity. So that lets me to know that when it does come time for you all to form your mission, vision and values, if diversity isn't like at center of that, then somehow we've, we've gotten off the, the, the track a little bit. Diversity is extremely important to everybody in this call. Um, it is the thing that you think is part of what makes you special. And I'm going to make a statement that's going to be really interesting because you have to learn how to use your diversity to improve your diversity. So what I mean by that is there's been this kind of dichotomy where as a town, we are diverse in our demographics. However, engagement on the varying levels is not as diverse and does not match the diversity of the town. So what we have got to figure out a way to do is how do we use our diversity to improve our diversity? And I think that's going to take a very intentional effort of identifying, um, opportunities where you want to see some increased diversity, putting in some measures and some targets that you would like to see. And then thinking about how can we put and engage folks to make those opportunities more diverse, while at the same time celebrating the diversity that we do have. So it's like this kind of making diversity work through our diversity because you already have it kind of built in. Um, but I think that this is another area that's touched a lot of things. You talked about lack of diversity on, in, in, in your board of education system, education system. We talk about lack of diversity on commissions and boards, but then you talked about how great it is for us to be such a diverse town. So it's really kind of bringing that, that dual experience together so that it really is the same. So that our demographic diversity echoes throughout all channels of operation in business. Um, and I think that's going to take some intentional efforts of, now, once again, I think are connected to your, your efforts in publicity and marketing, communication inwardly. Um, I imagine that there's a lot of people who are not engaged because they just don't know. They don't know how to get engaged, they don't know what to get. I think it's purely out of, I just don't know. And if it's not in front of me, it's not important to me. Um, so awareness is going to be key, um, engaging ambassadors are going to be key. Um, and I think that's also part of your communication plan as well. So I think diversity is a big chunk. I know it's very broad, but to me, the, the mindset is, is how do we take our natural gift, our natural, uh, diversity that we have and expand it to all the areas that are lacking those, that diversity would be the focus. But that's just something that came up. Um, so Counselor Wong and whoever else has a comment about that.
Thanks for bringing that up. Um, I think that we as, um, council members need to leverage our role more in regards to influencing policy. And I think that one thing I'm, I've been advocating is for us to take serious some framework from an equity assessment program policy that I'd like us all to take serious when we get into budget season and understand what's that, what that's going to take. But those are more robust conversations. And then to your point about diversity, JL, I would actually like us to embrace more of a, not just diversity, but DEI in general, diversity, equity and inclusion. And that pretty much encompasses some of these, these, um, trending thoughts and really making that a core value of how we move forward. Uh, yes, we can be diverse, but to your point, are we including all the, the folks? And are we including them from an equal standpoint, from an equity standpoint? So really ramping up, uh, DEI, uh, mentality in town really helped champion some of the, the things that we want to, uh, see as from a result standpoint, from, um, capital improvement projects, from how we think about policy, how we prioritize our, our resources, um, from a town perspective. So I totally, thanks for bringing that up.
So I, I see you, Counselor Goff and Counselor Curtin, I just want to add a comment. So this is one of those, those situations that when I see it, it's like, it's interesting because it is a very much a, a data issue, but it's also a culture issue. So it's, it's very one that you can address through things like policy, but it's also one that's also addressed through culture efforts. Um, so it's one of those things you kind of have to attack in both ways for it to be successful. And I think it does start with this group of people who is diverse and, and, and who, from what I've heard, celebrates diversity. And it starts from there and then it moves on to then how do we take those sentiments and make it policy, make it so it's real and tangible? I very much like the idea of expanding that thought and it's not just diversity, but diversity, equity, inclusion. Um, now I find that valuable. The question is, you know, do you all find that valuable? And that's something that we're willing to put our, our, our passion around, um, as from a, from a town perspective. Is that something that we want to do? I don't think there's anything wrong with that, but that's not my decision. So I thank you for that, that additional clarity. Um, Counselor Goff and then Counselor Curtin.
Yeah, uh, uh, thank you, JL. Um, just, uh, a couple of quick thoughts initially and then one, one, one final one from what your sort of continuation is. Um, what, just one thing, uh, to this whole, I, this whole notion, especially of inclusion, of getting a volunteerism, of, um, of people being committed to the town and trying to all work together and row in the same direction and make the town better. Uh, I do think this goes back a little bit to, well, it goes back a bit to the communication issue you talked about before, but it also goes back to some of the threats issues. Um, I have to say, I think that while there's, um, I think there's sort of a, there is sort of a, uh, feeling of camaraderie because of the pandemic in terms of, you know, we're all in this together, we're all suffering through together. I also think it's made, it's made, it's made people working together and people, um, you know, just being able to come together much more difficult. So you have those threats to that that are not things that are within our control, but we need to be aware of in terms of doing that. And I guess the, the, the other thing I, I just wanted to say in terms of, um, the notion here, uh, your, your comment about, you know, a lot of these ideas and thoughts have to be data-driven. I also think they have to be somewhat definitionally driven. Um, so for example, I think that one of the, one of our big challenges is really much more diversity of thought in terms of what a sustainable community is and what sustainability means. This goes back to our short conversation on climate change. Um, you know, the, the ultimately, ultimately the biggest, ultimately the biggest diversity is diversity of thought. You know, whatever else happens, you know, all of these other things are, are somewhat, you know, people are left-handed, people are right-handed. It's that real diversity. What really, what really happens with diversity is, is the question of group fit. And I think the more diversity of ideas and those idea, things being ideas and then evaluation by data-driven metrics, I think that's, I think that's extremely important. So I, I think that's one thing, you know, I think that at base, that's one of the things that a lot of us would say about the diversity of Bloomfield. There are a lot of talented people in this town. There are just a lot of variety of people from different backgrounds. And that leads to a diversity of cultures, identities and, and thought. So, thank you.
Yep. I see you, Counselor Curtin. I think it is, I think it's so true that we, we had to, I, I think the key word there is intentionality also is just making sure that we're intentional about creating a culture where that, that diversity of thought is celebrated and not shut down. And that there is platforms that we're putting on events that demonstrate how much we value diversity of cultures. Like I think the, the key word is that intentionality while to Counselor Wong's point, we're also working in the background to make sure that we're putting policies in place that are not only supporting that, that culture, but it's, it's signaling that this, and this is, it's almost like this is, this is a non-negotiable here. This is how we do business here in Bloomfield. It's not just wishful thinking and it's not just the fact that we're demographically different, but we're, we're saying that that is a value for this town and we're going to protect that. But, but however we can do it and promote it. Counselor Curtin?
Thank you, JL. And as an example, we just passed the policy and art policy that I believe that will help enhance that diversity when it comes to expressing those cultures through art that reflects our community as a whole. But I think there is perception in one's reality when it comes to, from a political standpoint, I know Counselor Wong talked about equity. And Bloomfield is not unique to what goes on in the state and the country when it comes to where people have felt disenfranchised in regards to the political process. And what I've learned through the last three plus years being involved in politics is that as you interact with a certain segment of the community, they believe that, hey, it doesn't matter what I do. It doesn't matter how I vote. Things are not going to get done. I'm not going to have a voice. And you know, that's something that we have to continuously work on is changing that perception. And I think we have to do that through policy and how we engage and communicate to the public. Another area that I believe is critical to our diversity is to make sure that when, when we advertise things, understand we have a working community, working class community. And too often I think we focus, which is, it's true, you have to have a balance though. When we approach certain things and we're saying, okay, we have these boards and commissions. Just don't say that everyone in this board and commission has to have all the qualification. You could have someone that comes to the table that brings a whole different perspective that may not have that unique experience. And I'll give you case in point. I, I had a conversation with a, a friend of mine. They were looking for, you know, the state was looking to find someone who don't, who's not a lawyer to be on, on this committee. And the objective of that committee was, hey, we don't need everyone to have this background. We need someone who may bring a unique perspective to the process and conversation. So I think as we move forward as a council, when it comes through appointing these various boards and commission members is to make sure that we're communicating to the public that, hey, here's things that we're looking, here are some char- characteristics that we're looking for to place on these boards and commissions, not only folks who may have all the experience. We have to diversify how we look at that in, in placing folks on those committees. That can bring new and fresh perspective that you can get out of, just say, hey, everyone has to have this unique background or experience. People do bring a broad scope of experience without some qualifications and areas. Thank you.
Counselor Goff, I see your hand. And if you allow me, just because of time, I wanted to share my last two kind of observations and I'll make sure I remember you. So keep, keep your hand up so I can see it. It's almost one o'clock and I just wanted, I want to get the, what my observation. So just to clarify, I first offered you kind of what I call like four must need things that I think you need to work on. And that was becoming a strategic structure, making some thoughts around what does your strategic structure look like? Investment into project management, investment workforce development, as well as becoming a more data-driven decision-making organization. So that's more or less kind of like my observations. Then I'm offering in terms of some themes that kind of surface organically from your SWOT analysis. One was around publicity and marketing, communication, both internally and externally. We just talked about some work around diversity and we've seen how that's been expanded to not, you know, to talk about policy, talk about DEI, but also looking at diversity from a variety of different ways, because that is a value that I think is crucial to Bloomfield and that we must protect and promote. From there, another big thing that came up was economic development. Now, the reason why I'm not, that should always be a strategic priority. So I don't want to just give you economic development, but I want to talk about two specific things. One, one thing in particular is the development of your town center. That has come up as a reoccurring theme, really looking at that and, and making some assessments and figuring out what can we do to turn that around. That's come up several times. And then another specific project that also come up that I think can impact even economic development would be the library. And I just wanted to share this anecdote with you is that part of my job, I travel. And one of our contracts that we have in San Diego, one of our locations, we provide services actually in the, is in the library. San Diego did, they built this beautiful edifice. I mean, it is gorgeous and it really serves as the, the center of town. Because in the library, they actually have, which blew my mind, they have a high school in the library. And they actually have a community college in the library. In addition to the library and workforce development service, it became like a hub of serving the region, a hub of serving the city. They also had this great opportunity for businesses to use their spacing for conferences, for workshops, for retreats. And it just became this, this, this bed of development for the region. And I'm, I'm not trying to put on my, that hat. That's not what I do by any means. But I just think that has come up and it might be something for you to think about this in terms of strategy is how can we connect, you know, a, a rebuilding of the library and expansion of the library. How can we connect that directly to economic development? But those are two projects that, that came up quite a bit that you might want to consider in terms of some strategic priority. So just to recap, and I'm going to give you the floor and anybody else, I just wanted to get that out. And I'm going to provide this to you in a written document as well. It's work around your publicity, marketing, communications. That was a theme that came out. Work around diversity, around protecting and promoting it through policy, through culture change, through intentionality. Looking at the library and looking at your town center where some things also came up as reoccurring themes. Now, there's also another automatic one right now, just because it's hot and present is reviewing the opportunities that are coming out of this COVID-19. That came up quite a bit. What are some opportunities, whether it's in terms of funding or grants? Or also conceptually, what are some opportunities? But I think tangibly, there should be some thought about making sure that we're pursuing the funding and grants that are available connected to COVID-19 that are appropriate for Bloomfield. I'm going to put this in writing, but I just wanted to get that out in terms of what I've kind of gathered. So Counselor Goff, you have the floor for now. Whoever else wants to comment on that, we can, and, and then we'll move on from there. Yes?
Yeah, I, I just wanted, I wanted to respond to, I, a couple of comments have made about volunteerism, which I think we all wholeheartedly support and want to see more of and want to see more inclusion. And I agree completely with Counselor Curtin's comments about not restricting people on boards and commissions because of, you know, thinking, thinking they have to have certain specialized credentials. But I, I think we should, I think regardless of how we, how we ever talk about this issue, one thing we've got to always put on the tray, table is that the reality is that a lot of the problem with volunteerism is simply that a large portion of the population that we would like to be able to volunteer are busy raising families, are busy with jobs, are busy with other commitments. And I think that is the main reason, you know, that we end up with a small group, you know, smaller subset of people in the town that come forward. A lot of them are retired. And that's great. They're giving back to their community because they have the time and resources now to potentially do that. But I think we've just always got to remember that, you know, to make, to, I, I'm not sure exactly what we can do completely to attract or to, to get that level of commitment from people who have so many competing. And we understand why higher, you know, higher priority commitments in their lives at, at various points. And whatever we can do to, to mitigate that, I think is great, but that is probably the main issue. If you ask people, oh, you'd be great for this. Oh, I don't have the time. I don't have the time. I'm doing X, Y and Z.
Thoughts, Counselor Calhoun?
Um, yes. Um, I don't mean for this to sound as if it's a lack of inclusion for the entire council, but I do know the Dems have a caucus hopefully coming up on Friday. And I would like to challenge each of us and maybe the Republicans can do the same is to bring, because we're all in this together, is to bring ideas, because it's been a year out that JL has been here and we have not done so. We need to bring statements of mission, vision and values to the table. I, I'd like to challenge us to do that. Because we, we are beyond overdue for, for those things as a focus for our town.
Okay. Deputy Mayor, man?
Uh, yes, thanks. And in line with the last two comments, I think volunteerism would increase if people felt that their words and their participation were worthwhile and something would actually get done. And I think it's because, I think that that gets to the discussion of focus and priority and appreciation for the time spent. If people aren't getting the job done or aren't accomplishing anything, they're not going to want to continue. They're not going to encourage others to participate. So people have that feeling. And it's all of these things we're talking about today may, i- if we are able to deal with them, may help change that culture.
Okay. So listen, I know I've done a, we've done a lot. So this is what I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to make all this available to you in a document form. My goal is to give you something that will, that you can bring with you in your next few meetings. Like I said, I differentiate it in my mind. There's some things that I think that are critical, mission critical, if you will, things that we've got to examine. Once again, that's our strategic structure, our project management, our data-driven decision-making abilities and our workforce development investments. I think those are mission critical that we've got to, in some shape or form. And beyond that, there are some strategic things that just came up in terms of grouping, what came up in those swats. And that is some intentional work around publicity and marketing and communication, both internally and externally. Working around diversity, being intentional about promoting and protecting our, our value of diversity. And that looks, that can manifest itself in a lot of different ways as manifested by your comments. That's through policy, but that's also through culture. That's through marketing, communication and also intentionality from this group. What came up, these are more kind of capital kind of things, but the library and town center, town center is more of an economic thing. But those both kind of came up as being highly important to the town of Bloomfield and should require a second look. Now you may take this list that I'm going to provide you and, and as a group, you might say, you know what? What's, what's front of center for us is going to be project management, workforce development and publicity. And I think that's good. And I think what you, after you make that kind of decision is going to be to say, all right, now what are some, what are some goals we want to have in this? So if we say project management, what's the goal? What's going to be the final outcome? And then we can map out how we get there. I've, I've laid out some ideas with you around workforce development. Publicity is the same way. What are some, you came up with some great ideas right in this call, you know? Who can we engage in our citizen, citizenship that can come in, in, in work on this? Can we engage some talent from University of Hartford? Shall we start pricing somebody to overhaul the, the website? So I think there's some built-in kind of next steps already there. But this, my goal was to kind of get us from the SWOT analysis, just some, some priorities. And I'm going to give that to you in written form. I, I see your hand, Mr. Curtin. I'm going to give you the floor and I'm going to pass it over to Mayor Suzette for final comments unless there's further and also other questions you may have of me.
Uh, thank you, JL. The one thing I want to add that I think will be critical, I know that the organization that we're hiring to, to look for a town manager probably can do this. But what I believe this video right here, the discussion that we're having, it's a great way to the next potential town manager to get a snippet of what Bloomfield leaders and what it's about, what is the goal, what is the vision? I think this will be great. You go to a lot of organizations, they kind of, the HR department kind of walk you through, show you a little 10-minute video or whatever the case is about the organization. I think this is great. I think if I was coming into this organization as a CEO, it's great to get an insight of what these folks are like, what they're looking for, the vision. This capsulate everything, I believe, in this discussion. Thank you.
There's one last thing before I pass it to Mayor Suzette that I forgot to say, and I apologize. The thing, there's one more opportunity that I think you all need to look at is your relationship with the Board of Education. I think they're the largest expenditure, I think, on your budget, if I'm not. But there seems to be a lot of concern about that relationship. So I think that's got to be something to me. I would probably put that on my top of my list of kind of mission critical things. That came up quite a bit, just in, I don't, in this way, because I don't even know what that looks like, but just what, what should that partnership look like? And figuring out how can we move forward in a productive manner that you all feel comfortable with? Because there seem to be some definite discomfort with the relationship, given that they are such an important component of the organization. I forgot to say that. I apologize. Mayor Suzette, I pass it to you, ma'am.
I can't believe that we've come to the, I can't believe that we've come to the end of this session. I don't know how we get another session in here. But I, I believe that this session was very fruitful, both the first session and this session. And I, I am confident in saying having a facilitator helped this council along the process. And I think we have gained some good information. I don't want to see the process stopped or stymied. I believe that we have some, some work to do. I will poll the Dems and then poll the Republicans on how we think that we can move forward. Once again, I think there's some homework that we need to do. There's some insight that we have gotten that if we capitalize on it, I believe that the next few months of council will be amazing. And the next few years of council will be absolutely profitable for our residents. So I'm so grateful to you, JL, for helping us on this journey again. And I'm, I'm sure we might be reaching out to you again for more work. But I think the council now have some tools in our toolboxes to help us to be more strategic and intentional for the next few months and for the next few years. So thank you for that. I do want to say that we had a suggestion. We're going to have a special council meeting. And this council meeting will be a council meeting of committees. So that the committee's chairs can talk to the council and let us know what's going on in their committees. Because if you don't go to their committee meetings, you don't know what's going on. The only thing you get is a, a, a snippet of a report during council meeting. So we will have a special meeting for that. I hope in that special meeting, we can also try to flesh out some of these things going into budget season as far as goals and priorities. Counselor Calhoun made a great suggestion about trying to come together with mission, vision statements. I think that's good. I think it's good to start the conversation. As Counselor Wong pointed out earlier on, it is an election season. And we know that that can be stressful. It can also take a different shape if things don't turn out the way this looks at the end of the next election season. So I believe conversations can be started. Also with the new town manager coming in, that it would be good for us to have some things down on paper. So thank you everyone for your time. I know that today was an extended time, but I believe it was also a fruitful time. So thank you very much for that. It is now 1:07. And I don't see anyone running off of their chairs trying, trying to get out of the meeting. So that means it was a good meeting. So thank you, JL. Thank you, Sharon in India for sticking it out with us as you always do, providing support for us as you always do. We greatly appreciate it. Thank you, Phil, for your leadership and your support to this council. There are some things that we will flesh out once again, to help us to be better. Because I do believe that while Because I do believe that while we have differences and they are many, I do believe that at the heart of this, we all really do want to work in the best interest of our town. And that was brought out by our facilitator. I do believe he said that the things that unite us is greater than the things that probably divide us and cause us some discomfort. But if we were all lovey dovey all the time, something would be wrong, right? Counselor Curtin would be okay because we'd be all hugging each other. Counselor Merritt would be okay because we're always eating, but it can't always be that way, right? So um thank you for everything everyone brings to the table. And thank you for the work that we continue to do um for our town. With that being said, I don't know about anybody else, but I have Saturday chores. Goodbye, everyone. Thank you.